Testimonial, all good presenters, please be advised that you are here today to present anything before Commissioner's Court that you are under oath. Public comments? No public comments. Approval of minutes of regular meeting June 3, 2024.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Approval of bonds. We do have one bond for the District Clerk's office. Entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona is our second. Second by Commissioner Duca Gava. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.2 Discussion of appropriate action complaint on MVA on June 6, 2024. What is MVA? A motor vehicle accident. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I ask this to move for a closed session, please.
No, sir, we'll have an open. I'm request open.
I don't feel like having it public. Speak in the public.
I feel that open.
What was that, sir?
I don't feel like having it public with the families here and families that can watch us online. This needs to be part of it.
Is this in regards to... Any personnel or legal matters?
Not legal matters. Is this complaint?
Okay. So... He wants to discuss it in executive session. Go ahead. Tell me your name.
Trevor Blackwell.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, we're going to go ahead and address this matter in public forum. You can go ahead.
I will skip some of the parts then because I need to read what I wrote upon.
Well, I mean, we're trying to be transparent here, so I would appreciate if you could just go ahead and...
I hope the court will do that.
Go ahead.
Did y'all get the package here? Sheriff called on.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I heard children crying from an upcoming vehicle. I went over to the other vehicle, deserved two female occupants in the front seat, were both already deceased, and the other gentleman was pinned on the floorboard under the backseat with the children. He was not talking, he was talking to his family, but I could not comprehend what he was saying due to me not being involved in communicating with them. I and another passenger stopped by earlier today, were able to get the two children out and place them in the backseat of their vehicle until he mess arrived. Dimmitt County Volunteer Team Carmona arrived on scene with one other department member not wearing any T-shirt or gear and started educating the rear carriage of the passenger. I deserved no safety precautions for taking, protect the other gentleman from debris from the spreader. The other gentleman was pressed against from the debris from the spreaders without regard to gentleman's safety or distance from the spreaders. Team Carmona proceeded pressing the gentleman's head with the spreader. Team Carmona said he needed the ramp, spread further to spread the opening to educate the gentleman. I went to retrieve the ramp from the truck and handed it to him. There were no batteries in the ramp, so Team Carmona had to rotate one battery to the spreader and to the ramp. In the meantime, the other vehicle was still burning fully going. No scream or hurt coming from the vehicle anymore. The second arriving fire truck arrived on scene about 15 to 20 minutes later. No one ran a water line to the burning vehicle prior to arrival. Deputy Louis Carmona and I pulled a water line from the front of the fire truck proceeding towards the burning vehicle. Deputy Louis Carmona handed the knowledge to another deputy on scene, and he went back to start the pumps in OVA. I was holding the water line with the deputy and noticed there was no water or pressure coming, so I went over to the truck and assisted Deputy Louis Carmona to start the pump. I went back to the deputy holding the knowledge to give him support. Deputy Louis Carmona came back and took the knowledge from the deputy and proceeded to push forward to burn to the burning vehicle. I kept up with Louis Carmona to offer him backup to pull, push forward with the charged line to extinguish the burning vehicle. We were able to extinguish the burning vehicle and surround the vehicle to make sure the fire completely out. At this time, I started to make my way back to my personal vehicle, and Chief Carmona told me, "Get off the scene because I did not belong there." I responded out of my own goodwill when I heard children were trapped in the vehicle. I did not respond to reserve, but to assist with the skills that I acquired beating the fire service. Obviously, I laughed how I was treated after my assistance was no longer being needed. The way Chief Carmona handled himself in the scene and how he operated to educate the gentleman was very unprofessional, say the least, and his lack of training definitely showed.
May I?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Trevor, under oath.
Okay.
Okay? And what I did was done right. I can understand the fact that you were upset because I told you to clear scene. One of the reasons was because you didn't have proper attire. The long facial hair does not fit in my department's rules. Why? Because the hair is the most flammable part of the body that catches fire. Second of all, you weren't a T-shirt, shorts, and sandals. That does not require and is not requiring you to be on scene with sandals. I can understand you were trying to do good, but at the same time, I got a thing for the protection of the Dimmitt County Fire Department. If you would have gotten hurt or anything like that, I wasn't going to pick up the ticket. I wasn't going to take care of you, and that's the rule on the mutual aid agreement. You all supposed to wait till you are... I can understand you responding, but then again, what you say that I don't know how to do the jobs, you're wrong, Trevor. You're wrong.
Where did you go to school, Trevor?
I went to New Braunfels, A&amp;M, and wherever I had to go.
Excuse me, pardon, excuse me.
No, 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 I can throw it.
Okay.
Don't start. So the training that I have and I've been doing for the past 45 years have never failed, and you weren't even there when I was executing the gentleman. Louis, my firefighter, so he knows how to run the pump. I don't have a problem him working the pump. He is listed as a Dimmitt County firefighter. He knows how to operate the equipment, so my truck came in, it didn't come in 15, 20 minutes later. They got there quick. The thing is, it's your word against me, and of course, with your department, and I'm going to tell you this, it's always bickering against us, and I'm going to tell you, that's what's always happening. Every time that y'all spilled a cup of milk, y'all come running to somebody to come tell me that. Supposedly, I looked at you bad, supposedly, I talked to you bad, but the problem is, it's not this. It's you all, because even your own chief have told me under oath, and I can bring him up here, the problems he has in that fire department, and he mentions names and tells me who doesn't like him, and y'all have two little groups, and this is your chief saying, and under oath, I have meetings with him. He always says, you know, I'm one group and here's another one, but two other officers don't like me. They want me removed, and that's where the issue is. It's not over here. The problem that you try to find an issue in order for me to look bad, but no, sir, I ain't going to look bad for my department because I follow the protocol that he does, and under this mutual aid agreement that we have, it's not actually a mutual aid agreement. It's just complying, being compliant to the other one. It's not to replace the old mutual aid agreement. If you read it, that's what it says. So never have I... Y'all would like to bicker and everything about the county, even at one time it was mentioned that y'all didn't like the Dimmitt County Fire Department because we wouldn't call y'all to respond to our fires. Again, I look at the safety, the safety of firefighters and anybody at all. I don't have no problems with any other fire department except you all. You all, and I don't know why, and you might smirk, but I'm telling you that you're the only department that always has an issue. And if I said I did the right thing, and I'm not going to talk about the patient because you're claiming under oath that I smashed his head. Remember, if they do, I'm going to request a copy of that autopsy, and if there's damage to the head, then I'll take whatever responsibility there is, but if there's not, I'm coming to agree. Yes, sir?
I didn't say smash.
Because I'm tired of... It's not the department that y'all don't like, it's me because I run a straight fire department. I dress up as that way as supposed to be. It's not, it's not that y'all, that city police don't like. Your chief, I said that to you. You got two officers that we helped them on scene, or I had an incident in the middle of it. Did they talk to me? Did they ask me what happened to the fire within the city limits? No, they just walked around and headed back to the station. They set up that information for that target bird. But see, the problem is, we have a hell of a response cycle. We don't, we don't respond 10, 20 minutes, we respond within five minutes. Most is eight. And yes, I took the initiative to not be dressed, but I was going to take the circumstances of me and what I did. I take that responsibility that I wasn't dressed, but then again, I know I lose truth. I'm not there with open jackets or handcuffs or equipment hanging, and this is a priority, y'all should know. That's how you enforce your rules.
I've been told many times, sir, and I took that upon myself, and you're saying I was not there to educate the other gentleman, right? When I was pulling on the door for you, and then Dustin Lopez took over from me. He said, "I got it, Trevor." So Louis grabbed me, and we went to the fire truck and grabbed your hose off the front of your truck, and we, me and the other deputy ran it towards the front, and Louis was trying to get the pump started. He couldn't get it started. He couldn't find the tank to pump switch. I went back to your truck, and I pulled the tank from.
Okay, go ahead, Trevor.
And I only, I responded with City Fire. That was on my own will. That City Fire had nothing to do with that.
Let him finish, Professor.
I'm going to go ahead, you know, and I have no problem with you or your brother. I've known your brother forever.
Sir, the only thing that I can say is, you're all volunteers. You all make mistakes. The problem is that when something goes wrong, we all get sued. So you have to be very careful of what you do. Your department, the county department, the Crystal City Fire Department, anything you do a little bit wrong, you always come back and sue the fire department. So what I'm saying now is, if something was wrong, there's the man with the missile side. You should have just gone to him and told him. He's the one that takes care of the county. He's the one that punishes the county, not us, because like I say, it's a volunteer fire department. We, we can provide the funds, but we can't tell them what to do and what not to do. I don't know what to do. So that's the problem right there. You go to him or you go to whoever and explain to him that something was done wrong, and if he says that there was something wrong, he'll take action. I guarantee you he'll take action. So next time, if there's a problem, go directly. Because we can't answer you. We weren't there. I don't know what happened. You say, he says.
Yeah.
So who are we going to believe?
He got seniority over me, so.
No, 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 it's not matter about authority. Who are we going to believe? You or him? It's a tough stuff.
I think no matter what, I think no matter what, Mr. Blackwell, at the end of the day, the two fire departments should be able to work together, obviously.
Yes, I totally agree.
And I understand that that's why your complaint is here, I suppose. And it's extremely disappointing and saddening that we're constantly having to hear that there's bickering and conflict amongst the fire departments. You know, I always say that if we work collectively, you don't have to agree with his position. He doesn't have to agree with the chief's position, but if you work collectively and you work together, you can be able to provide a service to the people in need a lot faster, more quality service, if we could just get along for a minute. And I'm not saying that you're wrong. By no means I'm saying you're wrong. I'm not saying that he's wrong. What I'm saying is that at some point, there has to be some of the meaning of the minds and working together because it really is sad. There was people that died. There was people that died in this incident. You were there. You saw it. I didn't. So I understand you have your position, and you should have every right to voice your concern about what you felt that day or what has transpired. But I think that there has to be at some meeting point where, you know, we have to get along for better or worse, and if it's still, there's still no working relationship, then I think that it should be brought up, and I would disagree with Commissioner Juan because I look at Mr. Gonzalez over there, and he's bopping his head and rolling his eyes because Mr. Gonzalez knows that he's not, Mr. Gonzalez is not in charge of, he can't file as an attorney. He's an attorney. I'm an attorney, and I'm agreeing with Mr. Gonzalez because Mr. Gonzalez knows he's not the man that could just going to get all the complaints. Is that correct, Mr. Gonzalez?
I get the complaints. I just need to correct one thing. I'm not here to punish anybody with the county. You know, if there's something that's been done wrong and I need to have someone look into it, I'll do so. I cannot request an investigation. Most I can do is ask the fire department to investigate. They don't want to investigate, then I ask the district attorney to investigate. They don't want to investigate, and I can't request an investigation from the Texas Rangers. They won't even tell me. I've got letters to prove that, but, and I can't prosecute anybody unless I receive a report from a law enforcement agency, there's been any wrongdoing, or I witnessed it myself, and I've reported.
Correct. And I just, I think that something, something has to give. I mean, there's...
I agree. We all need to give long work to give, and we've tried many times. I've got people in the back that protested that. We tried many times to contact them, "Hey, come work with us." All no, we didn't get a report. I can't remember exactly what it was, but we requested Dimmitt County to come to one of our execution trainings, and they did not show up.
And I think, and I think that there has to be at some point accountability, whether it's from the Dimmitt County Fire Department or the Carrizo Springs Volunteer Fire Department. There has to be accountability. If we're wrong, we're wrong, and we have to say we're wrong and own up to it, exactly. And I think that it's just, for me, being the county judge, it's very disheartening and it's very disappointing to constantly be hearing that the two fire departments cannot get along, whether it's because of, you know, how Commissioner Alonso carries himself or how your department carries himself. I don't know. I'm not out there all the time, and maybe I should start going out there and start seeing, and I'll bring Mr. Gonzalez with me so that we can both see how people behave and help hold people accountable and put their feet under the fire so that people can be held accountable. But it's very sad and it's very disappointing to constantly be having complaints about one or the other. We should just be able to work with each other, and you should be able to have that freedom to, you know, say what you have to say so long as it's the truth, because he is right. If you make accusations, allegations that are not true, there can be legal ramifications. And so if what you're saying is the truth, then you stand by it, and if it's not, then you must understand that there can be legal ramifications against you or against him or whoever is discussing or saying any allegation because that's tainting somebody's name. And so, you know, I've heard your complaint. I'm going to open the floor right now to give the commissioners an opportunity to follow up with any questions or discussions that they have as per the way that we're allowed to or we are allowed to. But I urge you, Mr. Blackwell, and your team of colleagues in the room here today, and Chief Gava, you know, if I can be of any kind of assistance in trying to mediate so that you guys can work together, I'll try, not that anybody will listen to me, but I can try because this is very disappointing for me and it's disheartening to be quite honest with you because I know that the family, some of the family members are here, and I would hate to be a family member that I have somebody out there burning in the car and you guys cannot get along for one second and save somebody's life or not save somebody's life because we cannot put our pride and our egos aside because at the end of the day, it's a public service. So I urge you to try to work together, and if at the end of the day you can't, then you can't. We'll go have a conversation with Mr. Gonzalez, and we'll go talk to Mr. Gonzalez and see what needs to be done. But at some point, this has to get resolved one way or another.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Before the commissioners speak. Judge, on that training that he mentioned that we failed to go, we forgot about the training, the whole department. When I called them at the last, I was called at OVC. They sent us a invitation to sit with the city manager, and we agreed to have road training with fire departments. Unfortunately, I forgot and most of the members forgot, so we get the call right at 7 o'clock. I y'all come into the training. We explained to them that we had forgotten about it, that it was a no intention, that we didn't want to participate because we have a training coming up Wednesday, Jaws Education, and I went and started getting the cars to work along with them so they can get more familiar with what we go through. One of the things that I address a lot, it's the training. We can't be without lack of training. Again, this just happened. All these arguments are just happening at the beginning of this year. Everything. Anything that we have, as this is not the first one that comes up, it just seems that... The problem is, why can I get along with everybody else, with every other fire department? And I can bring other issues in, but I'm not because I'm just going to let it sit where it is, but at no time, I'm going to risk any firefighter lose their job for not having the proper attire because first of all, and I'm going to be honest, first of all, the insurance is going to say, "I know we're trying to do good." Myself, like I said, I wasn't dressed, but I was going to do an execution as quick as I could, and the reason I didn't have my gear was because when we got the call, it was called in the justice of fire. So we took the truck with the most equipment and execution, so I'm the pump operator. So when they said that there was a trap while we were in route, then my mind shift, and I wasn't dressed because the pump operator does not have to be fully geared to operate the pump because those boots and everything we wear can get in the way of the gas pedal, the brakes, and we might have another accident. So when I got there and I was advised that there was somebody trapped there, yes, I went right away to execute him. And whoever, like I said, when I see somebody that is not dressed appropriately, because this is one of the things that I remind at every, at every call we have, one of the things that I remind is to tell whoever is there, back away from the vehicle because if some object flies out, they're going to get hit and there's going to be an injury. Cars are very unpredictable, and you know that. So that's why I clear an area. Not that I don't want their help, but again, we don't want to have another injury due to objects falling or us tossing equipment around. That's why I advise the deputies and the sheriff, move on back. We need to do our job, but not that I don't want anybody that's there close to me because you never know what's going to fly out. It's a class, and I know we don't have a lot of support in the Dimmitt County Fire Department. That I know, but...
What do you mean by that?
Well, I'll talk to you this quick.
Oh, we're here already. Sure, go ahead.
That's beyond scope of the agenda. But again, my thing is the safety and the care of the patient that's in there. And if I have to get him out without it, that's my protocol. Not the cities, not the city, not Crystal City, not everybody. It's my protocol. If I decide to do it without any gear, yes, I'll do it, but I fear for you because if that fire would have flashed over, and again, I'm going to go back to the way you were dressed, you were going to be a casualty there. And I understand you're trying to help me, and you're trying to help the citizens, but at what cost are we going to use another fireman if that's lack of proper gear? And that's why it stays in the mutual aid agreement, that you're supposed to be fully equipped here. And of course, you have your gear in town, so if you carry with you and you have it there, I have no problem. If you carry it with you and it's up on my seat, I have no problem as long as you're geared up, but I got to look at for the situation of the patient and the people around.
Go ahead.
Yes, Judge.
Before you start any questions or anything, just be careful what you ask. I understand this investigation is still, well, the incident is under investigation, and we shouldn't be asking about details about the accident because it's ongoing investigation by DPS.
Thank you for your note. The only thing I was going to say, Judge, is that at the end of the day, if we cannot come together and work as a team, as small as a community as we are, everyone is. It affects everyone, every single one person of this community. We never know when we're going to need assistance, and God forbid we were ever caught in a situation that we had a major catastrophe of some kind. It's scary to feel that we don't have two departments that can work together. That's my opinion, and I would highly recommend that we come together to form some kind of... And I understand we're going to have differences. We're going to have differences of opinions, and it's just, that's just the way it is. But if we hold that respect amongst each other and amongst each department, I think we can get a lot more accomplished. And at this point, I'm going to be honest, it's not about who's who, who does what. It's about what can we do to work together as a community. That's my highest recommendation at this point.
Any other discussion?
You know, the only thing that I can say is sorry for those lives that we lost. We're sorry that we lost some of my friends, some of them are related, some of my friends. You know, so, and to bring this up right now, it's kind of heartbreaking for me. You know, and like I say, the social silence is there, the judge is there. Whenever you have questions and you think something is wrong, go directly to them. There it was to take, because like I say, Commissioner's Court, we only approve and discipline by the city. So we can't answer you yes or no, and as far as working together, it's been here 45 years and never once have anybody of your own, him or the city, have worked together. Never. It was the IBC 16 fire chief, and now this chief, you always bickering with them, I mean, they're bickering with you. So, I mean, come on, work together. We're all grownups. We're not kids. So, see, what's it take? The people that suffer is the community, not us, because we get upset at each other, and tomorrow we'll be talking, but the community is the one that lost. So please, try to get along.
First of all, my condolences to the families that are here that have lost a loved one during this tragedy. In my opinion, they should not have been brought to Commissioner's Court. It could have been discussed privately with the judge or Mr. Gonzalez, as we said before. But I know this has been going on for years. I'm going to say it started this year. It's been going on for years, and it keeps getting worse between these two departments. So I ask that you guys please work together, not for us, not for us with the officials, but for the community. They're the ones that need to, they're the ones that depend on you guys when you guys are called out to the scene or to a fire or anything, any accident. Not us, we're not there. We don't know what happens when you guys are there. Could I only ask you guys to please get along, not for us, but for the sake of the community?
Any other comments?
Yes, Governor, I do. Got two suggestions. Both fire departments, if assistance is needed, go through dispatch. Let the other department know.
Let the other department know that we need assistance and they'll come out. If they don't show up, then it's on the department that did not respond. Now, if they weren't dispatched, the other department shouldn't be making comments. Well, Dimon County originally didn't show up and we need their help, well, they didn't ask for the mutual aid. Ask for the mutual aid and work together. Secondly, it's gonna be sad. I've already made this recommendation to the judge and to commissioner. If emergency management, the county judge or emergency management coordinator has to show up and make the decision because you guys can't work together, that's sad. You know, and if that has to happen at every fire scene, you know, because we shouldn't be receiving calls from the city manager to a commissioner saying, we need assistance and we need help. Well, why wasn't Dimon County dispatched out? You know, why wasn't anybody else called, the county judge saying, you know, we need help with machinery that we don't have? You know, that line of communication needs to remain open regardless of what fire is out there because it could save not only a private citizen's life, but a department's life. And all lives are important in Dimon County. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Black?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. There is no action. 2.3, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Sentenced Tore Claims Act Complaint to Insurance Company. At this time, I'm gonna go into executive session. The time is 10:34. Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia, the time is 11:07 and we are retiring from executive session. I am going to make a motion to authorize the county judge to forward any legal Texas tour claims, complaints to the insurance company and the alternative... That the county attorney, county judge, excuse me, have the authority to negotiate and/or seek legal counsel in the representation of this particular claim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of the Underlocal Agreement with Texas Park and Wildlife. Dimon County, do you have a representative?
That was from the auditor's office.
The auditor's office?
Can you table off and I will add what is?
I'm gonna motion to table this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for Repairs of Runway, Taxiway and Rampway, Dimon County Airport. Good morning, Mr. Martinez.
Good morning, Senator. Some of those figures are there. Another over 100,000, I think, probably up to the ramp. But I talked to one of the contractors and told them maybe we could do part of it, do all the crack sealing this summer. And then next summer, do the rest of the seal coating and stuff like that. Only 10% of the county is covered on this.
Mr. Martinez, is there a urgency on this? Like for it to be done tomorrow or in two weeks?
Well, just the deadline for me to turn in the invoice for reimbursement will be sometime in August, mid-August.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to table this item to authorize the county judge to meet with our auditor and review these numbers.
Second. Oh. I'm sorry. And I think when I told them to do the crack sealing and stuff like that, just two part of it, they told me, they were supposed to send me an invoice, it was gonna be like 30,000 around there to do crack sealing.
Say that again? You can just...
I'm sorry. To do just the crack sealing, it will be like 30,000 around there, 30,000 to 40,000. Instead of doing the whole thing right now. Two part of it.
I have to do this as a mini process. And I thought it's over $40,000.
Yeah, are they doing it or we doing it?
That's why I wanted to know because of the comment he made. He said that county would be responsible for 10%.
Yes, and we have that in the budget. We have it in the budget for do that, but what that happens in the past, they actually do it. They just send us the invoice. The Texas Department takes care of it. Or is that...
Well, the county has paid the whole amount and then once I get the invoice, I submit it for reimbursement. We get 90% of it back.
But my understanding is they handle it right as far as the...
Yeah.
They do it, we don't.
Just pretty much, just...
That's the way it's been in the past?
Yes.
Where they handle everything, we just give them the money and then we get the reimbursement. And I think we have...
What I would like to see though is, I mean, for us to itemize and review, I mean, we don't just give money. I don't care how we did it in the past. We're not just gonna, because it says it's 300,000, we're just gonna go ahead and give them 300,000. I don't want to do that. I mean, the commissioners, if you think that's wrong, you can voice your concern or vote against me, but I'm not gonna just, because they say that it's 300,000, we're gonna give 300,000. I understand that they reimburse and we only pay 10%. But I don't think that that justifies for me to just approve a PO for over $200,000.
And that's fine, but the deal is that they go up a bit, they submit it to you and then you review and then you approve it. And like I said, we put in the budget because our portion, our portion that we gotta pay, it's already in there and it's been more before, but... But yes, you can table it and we go over.
But from what I see here, there's like three bids.
There is three bids.
But again, I go back to Ms. Commissioner Ovocava, no way supposed to advertise. Or this part of a grant that requires no, no...
So what's...
No bidding?
So what he's, what Mr. Perez is saying, Commissioner, is that the organization that is putting these bids together, they have their own process and then they bring it to us. They've already done their bids, they've already done all their stuff. They bring it to us for us to approve which one we want. Essentially, they've already done all the job in terms of getting the bids and then they bring it to us and then we approve which bid we wanna go with. Is that correct, Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir.
My question is, why is there two different votes for the same company?
One, because of the type of material that you're using. It just depends on the FAA, different VHS and stuff like that. Cheaper material, you can, it's just, that's what it is. And like I said, we got 100,000, doesn't mean we're gonna have that 100,000 for next season. It could be less or less. But I could get more information from the contractor or give you the other ones. Do just the crack sealing.
We got a motion, Chief?
I did a motion. Are you motioning?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, got a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. 2.6, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Hired O'Halee Munoz as Dimon County Attorney for any legal matters. I am going to submit a motion to authorize the county judge to allow her to negotiate with Mr. Munoz in regards, in regards to attorney's fees and that Mr. Munoz be... That there be a discussion in terms of Mr. Munoz representing the county for civil matters. I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.7... 2.7, Approval of Solder Shakes with Attorney Charles Kimbra. Again, I'm gonna ask for a motion to authorize the county judge to discuss and negotiate with Mr. Kimbra in regards to the details regarding the Solder Shakes farm here in Dimon County.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yes, sir.
Is this part of the one that they already built?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. As I remember, there were some deals that were also...
There is, and this would authorize the county judge to negotiate on behalf of Dimon County so that we can be reimbursed or made whole for any of those violations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.8, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for County Judge... Excuse me. Approval for County Extension Agent Alyssa Cruz and FCH Agent Gaisam Munoz to attend the 2024 Agrolife Extension State Conference, July 30 through August 2nd. Good morning. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.9, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for County Extension Agent Ms. Alyssa Cruz to attend the 2024 NACA conference, July 13 through 17 in Dallas, Texas. Ms. Munoz is not attending this one? Are there any questions? Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one abstention. Commissioner Alonso, he's not here at the moment. Motion carries. Thank you. 2.10, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from JP Precy One, Ms. Sonia Guerrero Perez for the month of May 2024.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Are there any questions of Judge Perez? Motion by Commissioner Alonso. And may Commissioner Odena, I apologize. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ovocava. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? We have one abstention. Commissioner Alonso Carmona. 2.11, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Continue with Intech Software for the Use of All Justice of the Peace Offices.
I placed this on the agenda. I'm not sure exactly the miscommunication or what was stated prior. The intentions of none of, the intention of the JP's is to continue with Intech. We never agreed to switch over to Southern Software. Intech has provided us with so many fantastic features and it'll show the numbers on there, what we collected and revenue, what we collected through the integrated online credit card, point of sales. A new feature that we will have through Intech is a text to pay, an email to pay, an interactive voice in English and Spanish for payment plans. I understand that the price is a little pricier than what y'all want to pay, but the program that we have is one of the best in the, that we can possibly, that I've looked at. We have not had any audits from the OCA Office of Court Administration since we've been with Intech. My understanding is Southern Software was prior Hill Country and I did ask my staff and Judge Letty brought her staff so they can attest to the problems that we used to have with Hill Country. Since we've been with Intech, we've not had any problems with OCA report reporting. All of our paperwork is correct. Our numbers are, there's never any glitches. We also have our magistration in Tlets and we are looking into a... I don't know if y'all are aware, I know the judge is, that we have to do PSRS reporting to the state. Once a judge does a magistration, we bring our paperwork into the office. They're entered into our system through Intech as a magistration generated and then we have to exit out of that system and go into a reporting system for the state of Texas which will enable any other magistrates that are magistrating that individual to know their criminal history in the touch of a hand. They press something and they'll be able to get that information. Currently, what we're doing is that we're entering our information on our system and then we have to exit out and go into DPS and enter that information, which is a duplicate of data entry. Intech is now going to integrate where we'll do a push of a button and it'll integrate into DPS. We no longer will have to do double data entry, exiting out. It is a very high-tech software and this is the equipment that my office needs to run efficient and effectively. And I understand the price. I understand that it is expensive. But just like y'all have jobs and y'all have to get certain equipment to get those jobs done, a certain backhoe, a certain skid steer and, and those is what gets your jobs done for your employers, for your operators to get the job done. This is what we need in our office, this equipment to get our job done to completely do our jobs efficiently and effectively as we have done. I'll allow any of the judges to come and speak if they want.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners.
As Judge was saying, we, the office of JP four, we utilize a lot of citations, civil courts criminal and all that, CDO. And Intech's been real good to us. It's been real good. If we wanna go back to Hill Country, I believe we used it for a while, which is now called...
Southern?
Southern. We use it since 2007, since I've been here and we did away with it 2015, commissioner's court did, to improve our system. So for that reason, in my opinion, we wish not to go back to where we were back in 2007 and we wanna continue on with a bright future for Dimon County by using Intech. And that allows our offices to function better as an office. Thank you.
Questions?
Your Honor, as you know, we've all had problems with the other companies and we finally have something going that's gonna work for the county, for everybody. So therefore, when we put it up for bids and everything else, and Intech is expensive. And this other company that we're getting works with the sheriff, the JP's and everybody. So I don't, I don't feel that we should be paying two companies for a worker.
Give me one second, Judge. Do we have the numbers, Judge Perez, or Mr. Perez? What was the numbers of Intech versus Solution Software you said?
Forty-six thousand for all the people for Intech and then Southern Software.
So we can hear you.
Intech was in the 46,000, I believe, and Southern Software was 24,000, it was a lot. twenty, it was a lot, it was practically half.
Mr. Pérez, do you recall in the past when Southern Software utilized by the county?
But Southern Software has never been in the JPs.
I know the name, but it's...
I don't believe Southern Software was Hill Country.
It was, they told us at our presentation. Y'all recall that they said they used to be Hill Country and they switched over.
If it is, Hill Country was, is very...
Backward?
Backyard, yeah, it's, well, Hill Country is. I don't know about Southern Software.
So, may I?
Go ahead.
So I'm just gonna be blunt about it. My concern at this point is I don't work with the JP offices to know what, how they operate and what they do. I see reports, but it kind of, I'm gonna use an example that you gave us, us as Commissioners. There's times when we request a specific piece of equipment because for a specific reason it makes our job easier and I understand that. And with that said, it's important that the JPs, kind of, we get information from them. Like Mr. Jeffrey Marquinez brought up, that he's being able to work like what y'all have now. I don't wanna, I would hate to take something that's working from y'all. A lot of times, yes, we are here to make a bad decision for this county as far as the finance side, but we don't wanna end up costing in the long run more because we can't get the job performed the way we should.
And that is my concern with the other software that we will end up having. Right now, my office and Judge Escobar's office, two years ago, our office staff was cut. This is allowed, Intech has allowed where their job is just, they're able to do both jobs. Alicia does the civil and Rosie does the traffic. And because of the forms that they have, we no longer have to generate and type. We just press it of a button and we have those forms to do summons. I mean, I don't, I, none of the Commissioners have reached out to any of us and asked us what we felt or what we needed, because this is what we need in our office. No one has reached out to me and I don't know if they reached out to any of the JPs to ask us how we felt, because ultimately, we're the ones that work with this program. We're the ones that know what is done in the programs and how we help our constituents. I would hate for us not to be an efficient, effective office because we're moving ten years back with a program that cannot provide us with half of what Intech serves us. And I understand the price tag, I understand that, I do. But you get what you pay for. We're gonna reduce it and get something that is not going to be beneficial for Dimon County and for our constituents. And that's why I'm here, is to serve my constituents and to be a fast, efficient office.
Judge, I did reach out to your staff.
I know that my secretary reached out to you, yes.
We both, we sat there and talked to them and they gave me their concerns and how it works.
I know that Rosie, Rosie had reached out to you, yes.
But just let you know that I did, I did talk to them and listen to their concerns.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner, thank you.
In the meantime, just sit there, sir.
I appreciate that, thank you. So my apologies, Commissioner Cármona, I did reach out to my office or reach out to Rosie and did hear her concerns as the person that operates the program. So I, thank you, sir.
The only concern, give me one second. The only concern I have is that when we went, when we did this, what was it, six months ago that we approved? I need to look at the contract, Judge, 'cause I don't know if, if we signed off on that contract with Southern Software when we signed off for the, for the sheriff's office. 'Cause if we're already in contract with them, that means we have to...
Well, my understanding was that we were not going to sign and our tickets were gonna be integrated. That's what we had agreed to. That's why I reached out to John, you had asked me to reach out to John. And I have the emails where I reached out to him saying that we were...
The system was supposed to be integrated and discussed.
Not switch over, we were going to keep Intech.
I need to look, because I think we had made a motion, so Mr. Paredes had told me six months ago that approved for JPs to have software.
Again, no one even asked us of how we felt about this. Switching a software that, pulling a rug from underneath us is not fair to our offices. That's like taking a backhoe from each of y'all and not being able to complete your jobs. I'm being as sincere as possible and with all respect.
No, I agree with you, Judge. The concern that you're saying that nobody asks you, we listened to you all. When you all got complaints that you can't get that ticket from the sheriff's office and you have to do it manually, that, that's what we listen to. You always were concerned and you're never getting the paperwork or whatever. So we got a company that's doing one, both the JPs and the Sheriff's Department, and we're gonna eliminate that problem. That's the problem, we're working on.
That wasn't the problem, sir. My concern was because we switched over, the sheriff's office switched over from Southern Software, we were no longer getting our tickets through Intech. We have never had a problem with tickets coming in through the Intech, no, sir. The problem has been that we switched over, the sheriff's office and the jail switched over to Southern Software and we had to now manually enter citations because they were no longer integrated in through our program. So it was never that Intech was not giving us the ticket. It was that Southern Software was doing the integration and we had to manually enter them.
Sheriff, couldn't you get, maybe we ask you all the time about your citations and all of that because they had a concern?
Our citations, we don't want...
Sheriff, if you could move forward, please, to the right.
At least not personal, Judge, don't think it's personal.
I didn't say it was business.
Well, the last time you did say it.
It's business, well, it has been, I'm not gonna go, go ahead, sir.
Are our citations right now, they're not live, we're not live yet, still, we need the integration part that hasn't taken place.
Yeah, and that's the, that's, if you recall, when I came to Commissioners Court about a month or two ago, that's what it was gonna do. Give the sheriff access to the old tickets and also link Intech, well, what we have right now, to Southern Software, to the old tickets. Southern Software was gonna be able to log on to and be live with all the tickets. That's the only thing that is pending right now for that.
So now you're teaching your mind, you recommended that we stay with Intech?
It's not gonna keep, if you, if we, when we integrate everything together, we're not signing a contract with Intech or anything. Intech is gonna give the files over to Southern Software so the sheriff's office will be live. But that's it. We're not going forward with the sheriff's office with Intech.
Mr. Paredes, I have a question.
No, but right now, the problem is, the problem is, you're talking about the sheriff's office, we're talking about the JPs.
Oh, no, but that's just it, it's also linked to JPs.
So what essentially you're telling us is that this amount that we're paying Intech, I mean, Solution Software is gonna integrate everything and therefore, it's gonna go with the JPs too. So nobody will have Intech, is that what you're saying?
As far as the sheriff is concerned.
Okay, but we're not here for the sheriff, we're here about the JPs.
Okay, my understanding was because you all motioned, this was the last year we're gonna be with Intech with the JPs.
Correct, that was a motion that was made six months ago, but I don't remember who made the motion, but it was made, it might have been by Commissioner Juan because of the, of the price or whatnot and how much it was gonna cost. And so it was motioned back then that now moving forward, Dimon County is only gonna use Solution Software.
Southern Software.
So Southern Software, therefore, because it was gonna integrate the sheriff's office and the JP, so everybody could use Salute, Southern Software. So my concern from a legal standpoint, from a legal standpoint, is that if we are breaching a contract because we already had a motion on the floor and we already approved and voted to have Southern Software. And so my concern legally is if we breach that contract, Southern Software will turn around and sue Dimon County for breach of contract. That is what I'm saying, because there was a motion that was approved for us to sign off on a contract to have Southern Software across the board for JPs and the sheriff.
Correct.
See, and that's my concern.
That is correct. So I don't know what the contract is. We were looking for, we can find it, but that's why they're saying they don't wanna switch. But as far as what we're, what I came back a month or two ago was because of that, just to be able to integrate all the systems, to be able to have access to the old tickets.
You mentioned us all over again. We went through that at the meeting, you told us one thing and now you're saying another thing.
I'm saying the same thing I did two months ago.
Here, but you say we would no longer need Intech.
In the, for that purpose, correct.
Correct.
We will not need it. That doesn't include, that does not include, what she's here is, you all did approve to go with Southern Software for the JPs.
Mr. Paredes, I have a question. So, okay, we made this motion and it passed. Now, if for some reason, the software that is not compatible to the judge's task, now what happens there? Are we gonna have to come and spend some more money, try to get Intech in there? Because I wanna make sure that if, that if it's worked, if it's not any, if it's not gonna make any errors on the JPs, I want you to tell me that that's not gonna happen. Because later on, if there's a glitch, we're gonna come back to the table and then we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have an issue. And then we're gonna have to pay probably double the amount.
That issue, you need to take up with the JPs.
Well, no, no, I'm just asking as...
If I may answer?
Yes.
I did speak with John and they're ready to integrate. They just can't. They're ready to integrate and what I mean by integrate is be able to pull the citations from Southern Software into Intech. That they just need an okay and they can't do that. That is why for the past year, we've been entering manually, because we've been waiting. I was under the impression and so were the other JPs, that the integration was going to happen. And we would eventually, we would keep Intech, the sheriff's office and the jail would stay with the program that they have, but it still integrates. We're still able to work together. Only we don't want to use our, switch our software because our software is initially designed for JPs. Southern Software is not designed for JPs.
How long will this put you down?
Well, we're still down.
That's what I'm saying, but if, if the integration comes where...
Oh, we just need a agreed life, is from what I understand.
No, I'm referring with Southern.
Oh, if we switch over?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know anything about this.
But that's my concern.
Yeah, I don't know. And I don't know what they can and cannot do for the JPs. I, we came to the presentation, I know that none of the JPs were content with it or wanting to switch over. I was told that maybe because it was a cheaper software that it would eventually happen, but like I said, you get what you pay for. And in this instance, this program is exactly what the JPs need.
Go ahead.
Next suggestion would be, like we told Mr. Paredes the last time, bring both companies and explain to us what the savings are or how they work. Because you're telling us one thing the first time, now, now you're telling us that they both can work together and you're gonna pay a full amount on both of them. So let us know if they both capable of running the same thing. If not, let us know.
Okay.
It's a mess game.
What we approved for them to do was to communicate and that's all it is. It has nothing to do with the JPs. That will bring the sheriff's office the ability to look at the old tickets and also with the JPs. So we're talking two different things, two different contracts.
There was a problem that Intech had, they couldn't work with the sheriff, correct? So if we need the other one over there...
But you, you win with Southern Software, so they're okay. It's just that they need the old data that Intech has to integrate it into Southern Software. That's all that y'all did before. And that will also help the JPs regardless of whether they're Southern Software or Intech.
Well, I'm just vulnerable, I don't know. You tell us that we're gonna save money and now we're not gonna save money. And because that judge has always said, we're here to save money for the county.
But I wanna make sure that you understand what we're, the Southern Software and Intech integration has nothing to do, well, it helps the JPs, but it's basically to help out the sheriff's office, that's all it is for right now. It puts it back in the sheriff's office and then that communicates with Intech.
So you're saying what I'm saying, you're gonna have one company for the sheriff and one company for the other one. You're gonna have Intech over here and then you're gonna still paying that amount for the other one.
Okay, as far as the JPs are concerned, if the JPs and sheriff, yes, you would be doing that. Okay, but that's a different...
But the other company can run both of them, correct?
Which one? I don't, I don't know what features Southern Software.
Well, that's what we asked you the last time, sir.
I do not know what C features Southern Software does for the JPs.
That's what we asked you the last time, to make sure everything was black. You had apples here, you had apples here. You didn't have oranges here, you would have apples here.
I was not involved in the negotiations with the contract.
Who was?
The sheriff.
On the paperwork I provided each one of you, it says Dimon County JP Statistics and Features, additional notes, Southern Software...
Judge, can you go to the mic, please?
It says on the Dimon County JP Statistics and Features, page three, additional notes, Southern Software does not have their own JP software system and there's no reference to a JP software on their website. So they do not have one designed for the JPs. How do we switch over to a company that cannot do the work for our, for Dimon County? How am I gonna explain to the constituents? We don't have the software, we, we're having to do everything manually all over again, go back ten years or fifteen years because we want to save money. And I understand we are frugal with the money, but I'm not asking for something outrageous. I'm asking for something that makes our office function efficient and effectively. It's gonna set us back ten years.
For twenty years, I've stayed out of this argument because neither system has benefited my office.
I'm sorry, sorry.
For twenty years, I've stayed out of this argument because neither system has benefited my office. I still deal with the JPs manually to get my cases and to set court dates. They have to call my office, see if I'm available, everything's manually. So I don't benefit, I didn't benefit from Hill Country, I don't benefit from Intech. I've never been asked to really participate in the negotiation, whether it's gonna benefit all three departments and simplify the process for all of us. So I stay out of it because it doesn't benefit me. In the future, if there's a software that would benefit my office and the JP's office, 'cause I get an estro coming from Big Wells to turn in cases, I get precinct four or stuff is coming in to turn in cases manually. I get emails from attorneys saying, what's the status of this old citation? I have to get on the phone and call each individual JP's office, where's this citation? It's, it's over two years old. You know, why hasn't it gone to trial and why don't I know about it? So usually, I prepare my motion dismissed and send it to them because statute of limitations has run in those cases. So I really don't have a sense of which one's the better software because I've never been a part of any software system. In fact, I don't even have a case management system or software system for my office. It's never been available.
Mr. G, on the, on Intech, if it would be integrated into your system, would you have better access to the JPs?
I don't know, 'cause it's never been offered to be in our...
But this is a before question. If you would have Intech downloaded into your sys, into your computer, however it works, would you have access to the JPs?
Since I don't know how it works, I'd say no. I've got recently two new computers, I've got a laptop that's over ten years old. My, my computer is, I'm told needs to be replaced. I don't know if I have the, the equipment to run Intech in my system.
But if your system would be upgraded?
If it would benefit the system and help my work relationship with all four JPs? Because right now, it's like, and it had some type of scheduling system where they knew I was scheduled in one or county court or precinct one, two, three or four, it would be beneficial, 'cause right now, it's like, when are you available? I know you're gonna have court in JP two, or you're gonna have court in JP three, or you're gonna have court in JP four. And when are you gonna make time for me? So maybe in that aspect, if it has some type of, you know, counter system where we can all look into it, it would, it would benefit us and if I could look at old cases, when I get an email from an attorney saying, you know, what's the status of this case? I'm not getting a response from the JP's office, can you help us? So sometimes I even walk over like to one and two and say, let me know what's going on with this case, pull the file. And then sometimes it's in Omni already, sometimes it's in collections and, you know, it's like, you know, the sheriff's using one software, JP's using another software, I have no software. So it's hard for me to get into this balance, don't know, wrench into it because I'm not benefiting in any way.
I think that it would be available to do software for the county attorney's office as agreed on me, or he wouldn't be able to edit anything, that's something that we could talk to Donald, he would be able to have a pass, a pass code, him and his staff, and they'd be able to, to open up software and they can type in the individual's...
and they can type in the individual's driver's license or name or anything of that nature to pull that person up. But it would be a read-only. They wouldn't be able to make any changes or make any notes. It would only be for them to view.
Go ahead.
Mr. Oizad, I don't know a thing about computers. All I know is how to turn on my phone and turn it off. But I take the advice of the people that know, Mr. Pedera and Mr. Mendez. Those are the people that I listen to. Because they're the ones that know. Before, we used to have a whole bunch of problems. Now everything's running smooth. So that's why when they recommend something to me, I believe they already did the research. Maybe the young lady, when she comes in, she's smarter than I am. But right now, I take the advice of Mr. Pedera, Mr. Mendez, and the judge. The judge was telling me, who did... Let's go ahead and try the... I don't have a problem.
I have had problems.
Well, if you have a problem, that's your problem. But me, all I'm doing is taking the advice of the people that know more than I do.
I have tried, Commissioner, and I've had the problems with the grants and the figures with the grants. So it's hard for me to trust. I have tried. You know, I've had the problems with the grants and getting correct figures for Mr. Pedera, so it's hard to put my trust and faith in them to give me the right figures when I need them. You know, so... If we can't trust our order, who can we trust?
I think we sometimes...
You can talk to the district judge about that, remember?
And you know it.
And I will disagree with that, because when you asked me for the figures, I gave you exact figures.
Three sets of figures.
Well, because you changed every time. You wanted it for a whole year, then you wanted it for seven months, and you wanted it for four months.
And you couldn't get them right on either occasion.
No, every time it was correct, they were correct.
But you're not there, have to go through your staff to get it.
And they will give you the same amount.
I'll see you today, because I need new figures.
Judge, I think sometimes...
Which judge are you talking to?
Me. I'm sorry.
No, I was talking to you. Sorry, just wanted to... I know we're looking into doing some savings sometime for our constituents. But I feel that sometimes we better put the expense out there a little bit more, if it's gonna work. Because on the long run, we answer to the tax on the systems and the decisions that we make here. But if we're gonna have a program, I feel right now there's a lot of confusion on this program, this first program that they're mentioning of the Southern software. What's it called?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of questions on there. But the way I see it is, if, to me, this is just me and not including anybody else, if we have to spend a little bit extra in order for the program to work, I'll answer to my constituents. But that's just me stating, we're gonna have a program that's applicable.
You know, Judge, I was not here when they got the program, but I do believe that Southern software doesn't have the JP court, the INTEC act. It's just record management for us and then jail management. They do have the citations that y'all should issue, but they went with them, because they were neither certified to submit the reports. That's the main thing we needed. Because I would think they don't offer the JP management.
So we wouldn't even be able to start, because they don't have one. I don't know if they would have to create one from the bottom up. I don't know.
The mic's not working?
I said, I don't know if we would even be able to get started if we were to switch to Southern software, because I don't think they have a program. They'd have to build it from the bottom up for the needs of the JPs, and we're going to be without.
Judge. And for the record, Mr. Oizad... Anyway, for the record, Commissioner's Court decides what to do. Even if we don't ask anybody. If the court votes yes, then it's yes. If the court votes no, it's no.
Okay. Whenever...
If we were to ask all elected officials what they wanted, we'd never get through.
With all due respect, Commissioner, when you come before Commissioner's Court to ask for a truck or backhoe, do you not ask for... Exactly.
We ask here.
Exactly. But you do not ask us. You make the assessment for yourself on what you need, correct? When your employees need something, you make the assessment, what works better for your men out there. You make the assessment. This backhoe is better. This is... This grater is better to break the road.
That's the point I'm trying to make is that you said nobody asked anybody.
Well, and you're gonna make a decision on a program.
Did anybody show up and contest it? When we...
Because we did not know that INTEC was gonna be cut. Nobody told the... Judges, did y'all know? Judge Martinez? Judge Hernandez?
But you saw the agenda, right?
No, it said Southern software. Southern software. It said Southern software. Never did it say to cut to INTEC for the JPs. Never did it say that. Again.
Anyway, Commissioner's Court cut us.
Okay, I understand that. I understand that. And so when the program is not working, I will let the constituents know and give them your personal number. And let your personal number.
You're on video.
I will give them your personal number when they complain. Okay?
Those are wrong, come so wrong, and you say...
Go ahead.
Yes.
I understand that I myself didn't call anybody or any of the JPs to ask about some point of line, because I've always asked Commissioner's Court when you guys need your reports, how you guys are doing with your report, if it's okay, if everything's working. I've always asked. And my thing is, I'm not a JP. I don't know what you guys need to make your work.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Commissioner.
To make sure that it's working. I don't know. It's like you all don't know what we need.
Exactly.
As commissioners to make our job a lot easier. I don't know what our tax successor needs, or what our treasurer needs, the sheriff needs. I don't, I'm gonna be honest.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
That was asked, and I've always asked you guys, if INTEC is valuable for you guys? And you've always said no. I know we had issues before where they didn't have... For the ERs or what was it?
The diapers.
For the diapers. It didn't have the diapers on it. And I've always asked if we could get diapers on it. That was my only issue with INTEC, because it didn't have the diapers.
But the diapers was for the sheriff's office.
For the sheriff's office. That was my only issue. And you see, before, I've always... The last time it was brought, Commissioner's Court, I know it was brought to change it for the sheriff's office. My understanding was for the sheriff's office. That's why I voted against it on INTEC. If we're gonna do away with it, and I said no. I voted against it, because I knew that you guys were using it. So I used to speak for myself, and I know that everybody has a different opinion in INTEC. Yes, it does cost money. It's a little bit more pricey, but it is doing the job for you guys. Okay, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My question is to approve INTEC software for the... To continue with the INTEC for Justice of the Peas, for all Justice of the Peace offices.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I was gonna make the same motion, but to add to the motion is make sure that we don't... We're not in breach of the contract with Southern software.
I will sit down with the judge.
And again, I don't know what work y'all do. And it's like you said, you can tell me what kind of equipment I order. So I'll second that motion.
I appreciate that, Commissioner.
Commissioner, are you all right with that, Amanda?
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, if you can, on the record, and just for purposes of everyone in the courtroom and anybody watching, I want to make it very clear that the official record for Commissioner's Court is Mr. Garcia. Because we've had some individuals talk about it being recorded on camera. And I want to make it very clear that when I came into office, I wanted us to have transparency. And I know that I've gotten heat before about, you just want to be transparent, you want to be transparent. That's what the cameras there for. It's not to ridicule or to mock anybody. It's for the purposes of people seeing how we conduct Commissioner's Court. So that is not the official record. Just for everyone's information, Mr. Garcia is the official record. With that being said, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Carmon... I know Commissioner Rubo Cava made the motion, and Commissioner Rubo Cava, Commissioner Alonso Carmona requested your motion to be modified to reflect that that the Justice of the Peace offices to include all four Justice of the Peace that provide their service in Dimmitt County, continue with INTEC. However, that it be contingent on the fact that we will not breach the contract with Southern software. If there is a breach of contract, then I will put it back on Commissioner's Court. I will sit down with you, Judge Perez. I can sit down with Judge Hernandez and Judge Martinez and Judge Escuero. If you like, we can set up a meeting to discuss it. And at that point, if there is a breach of contract, I will advise you that there's a breach of contract and how we will pursue forward. And if by law, legally, we're binded to that contract, then at that point, it'd be understood that we have to go with Southern software because of that contract. But I would advise you, at that point, I need to get with our auditor's office to see what contracts in place based on the decision that was made months ago. I have a motion by... Is that gonna be your motion, Commissioner Rubo Cava? I have a motion by Commissioner Rubo Cava and a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition by Commissioner Carmona. Motion carries.
Thank you.
No, we're not giving away with the company. We're not giving away with the company. We're gonna look at the contract to see if we're gonna... If it's gonna be breached. 2.12, Discussion on Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from JP Precinct Two. Mr. Roberto Escuero, I will entertain a motion to table.
To whom?
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.13, Discussion on Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from JP Precinct Three. Ms. Vintici Hernandez for the month of May 2024.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Any questions of Judge Hernandez?
Judge, do you continue to have a slow one? Twenty citations? Yes, ma'am.
Judge, is that because they're not taking you those citations? Or what does that number reflect?
Well, we do get them, but they bring them in like, not every day. They bring them in like, maybe once a week or two weeks.
Sometimes, yeah, but they're still putting citations.
So she has to input all those that they bring manually. So... What do you mean manually? Because our vehicles are supposed to have a rebate for them to have a printer? And the software... No, she has to input all the laptops. The only ones that you don't input are the DPS, right? Only the DPS tickets get put in. But all the sheriff's office, the constables, she has to put them in. We don't have another way of doing it. So that's why we manually put them in. She has to do that. So when they bring them, you know, a few, I mean, she has a lot of things to do now, even the tickets, so that's why. Because for the month of May, you have 20 citations. For May, JP Martinez, 167. So, Mr. Martinez, is your office inputting the tickets manually as well?
Yes, Commissioner, we do. We do get a lot of it, every week, every...
Mr. Judge Martinez, if we can please address the court in front of the mic.
Yes, we do. Commissioner, we do get a lot of citations there in Precinct Four. At least 60 per week, every week. The clerks are extremely busy inputting all the information. And plus, we have CDO areas, we have civil cases, we have peace bonds, all of that going on there. So time consuming, the citations take a long time. Time consuming. I have both clerks at one time doing ticket, doing a little bit of everything, the criminal civil. But they keep themselves real busy. As you can see, like, they can't even come to a meeting here.
But he has two clerks.
And I have two clerks, are part-time, and...
Sheriff or Chief? Do our units have laptops in our printing system that we have before? Or is this an issue because of the software?
On the laptops, they're not... The ones we have right now, they're old. They... They're not... We can't get the software in them. They're not working, so we can't go live with those laptops. I did get five laptops through a grant, four of those. One of them won't be used, it's up and running. The other four I'm gonna put into the Rangl, they'll talk to us. I just... Once I get them installed, the company will come and install the software or the IT. They'll get them running, and those will be live. They're just... The old ones we have, the laptops, they're not compatible anymore. They're obsolete.
So you don't need new laptops?
There's a new... There's a company out there. I mean, I wanted to see if I could get with, but... Get in contact, we'll see if they offer for like every two years, three years, they take the laptops and put them on there. That way they're always updated.
Did you put this on your wish list?
No.
Does our traffic division have laptops in the papers? Are they not working?
They're not working. They're the old ones, obviously, the old laptops they had. Everybody right now is basically manually... We've got a couple of them, that they're doing them. They don't have a printer, so...
I know we... I mentioned this last time. We think you have a quota on the citations. And I'm sure there's more traffic in... I'm just thinking that Ernest, I know he's picked them. But is there any reason why twenty citations?
Traffic's low in that area. Who have my traffic units working? Maybe since the last Commissioner's Court, they have, we were low. We didn't stop them, weren't that area eighty-five, forty-sixty-eight.
Traffic is in this area? On this area? This precinct, yeah.
Then we have four, they're subject to a penalty amount.
I just wanted to make sure on the laptops, because I've been at my office when they came to Mr. Martinez came looking for Mr. Martinez and had the handwritten citations. And I was like, we had the software in the computers and the vehicles, what's happening to, and I know it's, I can show you for you all and for your lady, the secretary, yes, has to enter them all in hand. So that's why, that's why I'm trying to get to see what you guys need to better help them also and your secretaries to make the job a lot easier. Do you understand, a hundred and sixty-seven tickets to enter manually, then you guys have to enter them, and he has to do it also?
And Commissioner, by the time we're done, we get another bunch of citations either from the sheriff department or deputies and constables.
Judge Arrendes, on the constables, how are those citations in?
Question? Malo?
So that would reflect higher. From what I see.
Can I say something on the constable tickets? When I give them and input them, since we use INTEC, some of the constables aren't in our system, so I can't put them, so I have to go under unknown or something. That's why they might not reflect. And then it depends, because it depends where you pull the report. You can put file date, or you can put, I think it's the date it was, like, the date to put it in, or the date we give them. So I do still have some more tickets on my desk from May. So when I run full post reports, it gives me two different numbers. I don't know why.
That's what I've always asked back to where the previous judge we had, I would always ask, what is the difference, how are you guys getting numbers? Because when the constables come here and give us a report, the numbers don't match what you guys, JP's have, that's why I'm like, it doesn't match, the numbers don't match, they don't match.
So they're not getting input?
Well, I get them inputted, but I can't use their names or their, yeah. So if I have, like, actually I have magistrations to work when I get back, because those have to be in, like, the certain system by two days. So they were magistrate it over the weekend, so I have to get those back in. So I'll go and link those instead of working on my citation.
Just for the DPS.
So that's why the numbers are, yeah. They don't match, because we don't put them in as soon as we get them, because we have a database.
That's all. And then when we get through, they don't match.
Going back to what we discussed, Commissioner, this is going to eliminate a problem there.
Southern Software is supposed to have the integration from live to the INTEC. And that's what the deal was, because before, we had the constable tickets with INTEC, and they would take it into the, they would send it directly to the DPS. But Southern Software does that.
Because you tell them one thing, and then the judges or against whatever they want, but is this going to eliminate the problem completely? I don't want to know, yeah, or no, maybe, yeah. Is it going to take care of the problem?
I'm not sure.
I think from my understanding, what he's trying to say is if they integrate it, I think that's what they'll do. So if they integrate, they'll put their tickets in through their software, but we'll be able to see them on our software. That's what I believe is what they're trying to do.
That's the whole point I was trying to make earlier, is that I lose my groove sometime and I take more than I should. But that's the reason I want to know if it's going to eliminate the problem, if they will have any problems. Sheriff Department, the judges, they're all going to get the same information.
And like I said, I wasn't firsthand information for me, but I, that's my understanding.
Would the situation really not get resolved if their laptops are working?
Well, no, that's, yes, that's another point. Yeah, that, those laptops, everything that's.
That's what I'm trying to explain, you don't, you don't get me wrong, we can't tell the commissioner, yeah, hopefully this will resolve, where it's a series of issues that we cannot give, we're so behind, how much money, how much money this county is spending, and it feels like we are so many years behind.
Yeah, as far as the system is work, it'll work. As far as our equipment, giving them whatever they need to function is behind.
Yeah, so it would actually defeat the purpose of spending the money on the system when we don't have the equipment to make the system work.
Well, whatever.
But once they're entered in the system, then they're entered in our system, and they matter in, then the integration wouldn't take effect right there.
But your laptops would work for your traffic control.
Right now, the citation, we matter in them in the system, and then Southern Software says, once they're entered in there, and then say they have integration, they will be able to.
Okay, okay, okay. You state, once we enter them, and I know you don't feel in it, as a statement, once we enter them, it's probably a step from the sheriff's office. But at the same time, why, why is it not being, the gentlemen that don't, or, sorry, I'm saying, the officers that don't have a laptop, how do they enter theirs? I mean, do they just hand them to the?
If they're taking it, they're doing matter right now, right, the citation.
My question is, and I know the role and all this, have you more or less have an account of how many laptops you need, or what happened to the ones that you had? Remembered one time I had a, and I don't know if you were here too, but if they would move the constable's laptop to another vehicle, and then we couldn't keep track of our laptops?
The constables don't have our system.
Well, I, but what I'm saying is, back then, and you weren't a sheriff back then, but the laptop would be moved from a constable, because the constable moved to become a deputy and we took a laptop.
They shouldn't be, because they're assigned to the sheriff's office, and the laptop was assigned to that deputy, he was on the board.
That was one of the questions that I always had among the constable vehicles, if they didn't even know what happened to the laptop.
Are there any other questions for AP Arrendes?
Hold on. Who's in trouble?
Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenada. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. 2.14, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from JP Precinct 4. Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of May 2024. Two hundred and seven for this one, Judge Commissioner Holcava. Are there any questions of Mr. Martinez, Judge Martinez? Now I entertain a motion.
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenada. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor.
2.15, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from District Attorney Marisa Gonzalez for the month of May 2024.
Good afternoon, Judge.
Are there questions for Ms. Gonzalez? Now I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Orenada, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Judge, really briefly, I have a question. Do we know status of my door?
No, ma'am, I do not. I'll get with Mr. Dade though.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. 2.16, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia for the month of May 2024.
Pretty much on average, ma'am.
Questions of Mr. Garcia?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, who said it? Second by Commissioner Holcava. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from Demet County Assistant Fire Chief Mr. David Torres for the month of May 2024.
As you can see, for the month of May, we had a total of ten calls, or correct, twelve calls, with one of them being a burn van citation issued by a county deputy. We did have two motor vehicle accidents, eighteen meters that involved a decatur. And those were both in the decatur area.
Are there questions for Mr. Torres? Yes, sir.
Mr. Torres, the accident that occurred with the fire truck on the report?
No, sir, that was, that one happened on June 1st, sir. Oh, June 1st? Yes.
Are there other questions? Motion by Commissioner Holcava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenada. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2.18, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from County Commissioners for the month of May 2024. Commissioner Orenada, Precinct 1.
Judge, we've been, keeping riders clean from debris and moving, and we've been working on castle on the road, so quite a bit of traffic will occur on the road. And working with the city on removal of brush off, sure that, which one we had, we had some trees down, so we're setting the city with removal of trees.
Any questions of Precinct 1? Precinct 2, Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Judges, again, as we've been mentioning, we're working on Escondido.
Did you submit a report?
Yes, it did.
It's misplaced, okay. Thank you.
We've been working on Escondido, and as you can see, we put loads of rat material that we carry so far, we, if I'm mistaken, we're pretty close to about a hundred loads of mass rat material. So we got about a mile, a mile and a quarter to get to, to finish it off. And on, to any length, Mr. JR worksite are going to come and resurface the road at no extra cost. So we can go again and pay, and pay more.
Any questions?
Mr. Governor, which road have done a load of rapatyr?
I'm sorry?
Which road?
On, on Escondido. It says thirty-two, but every month we put a load that, that we carry. They're not total as one. And with the assessment of Commissioner Carmona, we were able to do more loads than, more what?
So it was rapatyr?
Any other questions? Commissioner, Precinct 3 and 6, Commissioner Carmona. Your report, sir?
I already declined.
Your report?
I declined.
Any questions of Commissioner Carmona?
Sorry.
You go to sleep for a minute. Commissioner Holcava?
Judge, we've been working on the county road, we're at the Waldron Road, thirteen loads of limestone, and now we started on Diamond Eight Road, with rat material. We are also at the, working at the old high school, we have the back storm, it's almost horrible, so we, you know, how it happened, two of the main lights, the big lights, they both collapsed at the same length, at the same area. So we're cleaning that with the, one of the workers is doing that, and then we're calling Wilkinson to deliver a bin, so if you put all that there, they take it out. After that, we'll start working, they're all demolished, it's going to be.
Any questions of Commissioner Holcava? Go ahead.
What are you going to do with it?
Take it to Wilkinson. Wilkinson.
We would like to have some, if it comes to burying, you will need to make something.
Yeah, you can go see if it's all.
Any other questions of Commissioner Holcava? All in favor?
Aye.
Director, excuse me, I need a motion. Motion by Commissioner Holcava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.19, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Purchase a Refrigerator for the Golf Course Precinct 1.
Judge, this refrigerator is basically a replacement for one of the old refrigerators that went out, that had been there, trying for the past fifteen years, is what I was talking about. We had ordered one previously, but these specs show one thing, and when they was delivered, it was a miniature refrigerator, you couldn't fit very much into it, it was about four foot tall and about three foot wide, because it was real small. So we took it back, because the price was really high on it, took it back and ordered, or got supports to get a different refrigerator. So basically, this refrigerator is through by work, but it's to replace what the one that went down. Right now, they're trimming everything up in one, and it's working double, because it's got so much volume and stuff in it. And we're actually using ice chips for the water, we take the one that we have right
But it was already approved, right?
Yes. Yes, because the price.
Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holcava, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? 2.20, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Remove Sediments from the Escondosa Water System Requesting to Be Covered by Emergency Fund, Precinct 1.
Judge, this item was previously discussed in the last meeting, and now requested to get two more bids for the job we got one. So that's basically what we have now. We have a total of three bids. And I do have Mr. Comprer here, and if there's any questions, could you, if you want to be involved in this process for this specific tip?
I have two bids. Is there another bid? You said three bids.
I think she didn't say.
It was in error, when there's not, this company, only things that tanks have to react here, and that would disrupt service. And to end, the outpost tanks would create a swamp to the neighbors, the customers down the road. But these other two companies have divers, and really the only ones that are, you know, close enough to us that will come down and services.
I know there's a price difference. Which one do you prefer?
Either one, but the second one, Ron Perrin, is much cheaper, it's half the price, and you're going to do the same service.
Have you worked with any of them?
Yes.
You're good with it?
Yes.
And you're asking for these funds to come out of the ARBA?
Judge, there was a, a, there's an emergency act that we have for one of these tanks, and it was actually budgeted for. I think we've already spent about twenty-eight thousand, how many was it?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand for the existing budget to repair the, the one railroad, two
Any other questions? Now I entertain a motion.
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three.
Two seven thousand.
Second. Second by Commissioner Holcava. Any further discussion? That the record reflect Mr. Garcia that it is to choose vendor Ron Perrin for the amount of seven thousand and ninety-two dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dade. 2.21, Discussion and Appropriate Action, To Approve the Labor on Installation of the Mobile Radios on the Fire Trucks, Precinct 2. What's the labor amount?
What's the labor?
What's the labor amount? We don't have an amount for labor.
I didn't even know it was on the, it was on the agenda. The table?
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenada, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.22, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Hire Arquetatura S.A. for the Preparation of the Bidding Document Required to Add HVAC to Existing Recreational Buildings at Bigwells and Asherton. What is the price that he's going to charge?
He's going to put it on for bids, he's going to hire him.
How much is he going to charge us to put those bids together?
I have no idea. Just, all I know is we got to hire him, then he comes back, and he tells us, and if we don't agree to it, we deny him.
No, I understand that part, but I want to know how much he is going to charge us to prepare all those documents.
I can call him and ask him to put it on, so, but I thought since we've been in it and everything else.
No, I agree, I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't think you should have AC in there. I understand, I've been at Commissioner Holcava's, and it's real hot, especially during the summer, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying, how much is outside of the charges to direct all these documents, that's the question.
Well, I can call him and ask him to put it on. Can you move to the table?
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenada. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Correct.
Man, they.
We could have pulled it and then bring the estimate and we'll add the other ones.
You, you can ask for that to be a motion, but I'm.
For example, you can always come back and reset it.
You can ask for that, I'm, I'm asking for us to see how much he's gonna charge us.
I already, they already tabled, but it's five minutes, you know.
You're gonna oppose? You're gonna oppose?
Yeah.
We have one opposition to table. That's Commissioner Juan Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point two three, discussion appropriate action approval to purchase a 2024 Chevy Equinox for IT.
Judge, they took the money for to buy the, the vehicle, and they always get, get me down to, we're spending more money on their vehicles. Everybody else, you know, they always try to battle, now, here on your vehicle. Therefore, I'm asking for this small vehicle for the IT.
And you, it's coming from what money you said? From what, what budget by name is it coming from?
From the C5 CO. Do you have any?
Go ahead.
Mark, do you have any issues with Tahoe?
Yes, I, I drive the truck, but for the new tech, he was gonna get the Tahoe, but, um, it didn't wanna start, so we took it to Rudy, and he advised us, it's, it's pretty bad.
That's, that's an old sheriff department.
Yes, yes, sir.
Who's gonna use the Chevy Equinox?
Uh, the new IT would, I would stay with my truck.
Yes, Commissioner Lucavilla?
There's two ITs, so there's only one you can commit it?
That's what he's asking for.
You have two ITs, are you only buying one?
Yeah.
Right now?
Yeah.
You have a coming budget, you put it for anyone? Yeah, but, but you have coming budget on your wish list, is there another one on it?
I took that money on, on my COs.
Motion to approve that.
This is coming from the CO too.
What, Mr. Perez? Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Now a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second. He's the manager for the department.
There's a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
She's abstaining. Two point two four, discussion appropriate action approval, professional services work order with Helly and Associates to assist Dimmitt County Precinct Four in preparing bidding documents to improve an approximate one-mile section of Diamond H Ranch Road using the remaining budget precinct four texted C-Tip program funds. Well, hi there, Mr. Helly.
Good afternoon, Judge.
I thought you were a stranger in the dark.
It's good to see you all.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's doing well. This is, uh, in Commissioner Lucavilla's precinct. This is maybe one of the last projects for the Texas County Transportation Infrastructure Fund. It's about one to one point two miles. We intend to start closest to the river, where the dungeons are, work our way back. We have the new transstrectors involved, and we'll let us build the road. And, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions as much as I can.
May I, may I, if we need to finish this, to, I have a question.
I believe the deadline date for the five years that we have with them is next year, March. Uh, the intent would be to try to get this out on the street as soon as possible. There's several contractors I've talked to in the area that have done work in the county before, that are interested in this, about your guidance. Jay and Jenny out of Crystal City. So I think we've got some good competent bidders that have performed adequately. This will be like any public improvement project that we work, that go along, the contractors have to bond with the contractor to do our project.
Mr. Helly, your fee will be coming out of the C-Tip as well?
Yes, ma'am, there's about one point one, one point two million dollars remaining in the commissioner's program. I believe that program was an eighty percent crack and twenty percent now.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, Mr. Helly, has the area been any previous engineer work on this specific section of the road?
We've worked on some of the parts of this road. We've certainly done the one on Commissioner Juan's side. We looked at it with Valerie, and we've done some survey work in that area. I did not include survey as an additional service in this, so we're gonna use that survey.
Did you foresee any, uh, need to contact landlords to approve the drainage on this specific piece?
I think we, we certainly could, we'd certainly like to try. In the past, we have tried to do it on everyone in C-Tip projects, Commissioner. Sometimes we haven't had much poprush. We have talked about in the past that this area is primarily a flood hazard area, and it would be nice to, um, coordinate with some of the landowners. Whether they will or not, we're not sure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Or, excuse me, I need to get a motion, I apologize. Motion by Commissioner Orenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Two point two five, discussion appropriate action approval for Metro to purchase a diagnostic laptop with software precinct four.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Last Commissioner's purpose, you all remember.
We approve it.
For the tablet, diagnostic tablet. We don't want the diagnostic tablet. You would forever much have this laptop. This one, as you see in the email, this one will also include the software for the UTEP, PIB machinery, for the mags, the bright liners, the gear belts, the boards, the caterpillar, the jump gear equipment as well. The tablet does not have that capacity without software. We would not be purchasing the, the tablet.
I have a question for you, Commissioner Lucavilla. Um, on this Brookner's equipment, it says two thousand three hundred gel test computers optional, but on the, on your list of bids, it says thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. Can you just educate me as to what, what is the price differences?
Maybe like a thousand dollars.
No, 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 like, I mean, like, back here says two thousand three hundred, but your total price is thirteen thousand, like, that's how much the laptop costs?
With the software and every license.
The thirteen thousand.
The thirteen thousand.
You buy enough to do so.
The diagnosis software, and it has the one-year licensing, the cables and all that.
I suppose you're requesting for the Brookners?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that out of OC or?
And budgeted, this, this two-year should buy you.
Questions?
Um, I have a question, um, Gubish, is, um, wondered, is your mechanic, whoever's gonna use it, is Marky gonna work with you?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a two-day training once we get it, if we do get it from Brookers, they'll come with a little training for two days. Yes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Orenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I abstain.
We have one of them, mentioned by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Two point two six, discussion appropriate action approval for Dimmitt County landfill to purchase a utility trailer precinct four.
Judge, I want to take this one as Commissioner's, but it's not commencing.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Lucavilla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point two seven, discussion appropriate action approval for County Judge Marta Ponce and precinct four Commissioner Valerie Lucavilla to attend the TAC RMP Regional Workshop on August sixth, twenty twenty-four, Yvaldi. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Orenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Judge, when will we be the, the meal, uh, will be going on the county vehicles since it starts at nine AM?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Two point two eight, discussion and appropriate action approval for County Judge Marta Ponce, Commissioners Jose Orenda, Alonso Carmona, Juan Carmona, and Valerie Lucavilla to attend the hundred and two annual CJCA of Texas Conference, October twenty-first, in San Marcos, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lucavilla. Ms. Eronades, there's no parking fee for this particular conference? There's no parking fee? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point two nine, discussion appropriate action approval for Buliza Sanchez Alvarado and Dama De Leon to attend the LGS Users Conference in November at Las Colinas, Texas. I'll entertain a motion. Yes, ma'am. Mine's at zero. Yeah, 'cause that, she hasn't told us. Um, entertain a motion?
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point, man, they. I have no earthly idea. By San Antonio.
For San Antonio.
Three point one, discussion appropriate action approval to purchase a handheld Z-Vac scatter with accessories and quick deploy LPR using the Operation Stone Garden FY twenty-one de-obligated funds. Uh, this is more of a procedural thing, Commissioners. Um, we have to purchase the LPR system, which is a license plate reader for the sheriff's office with these funds, um, in order. The, the equipment has been ordered, but we just need to have a formality, so I'm gonna entertain a motion.
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two, discussion and appropriate action approval under forfeiture account to pay for equipment and installation of a 2024 Dodge Durango using Far West Special Vehicles.
That one, Judge, you all have the estimate left on?
Yes, we have it. All right, is there any questions?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Orenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three, discussion appropriate action approval for jailer Irisa Betis and Jesse James Opus to attend the basic county correctional physical skills, June eleventh to twel- June twelve, twenty twenty-four, Del Rio. Sheriff, on this one, they already went?
Yes, ma'am, they already went. Uh, they paid for everything on the one, and they reimbursed.
So this is a reimbursement, not to approve?
It's one that last came up, the one that already effort, maybe for winning, I put it on time, the last one. And it's one that they need to take their turn location.
Questions? I don't have anything.
It's gonna be the, what they spent, it was gonna be two hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents.
But I have their receipts, so whatever they spent, that's what they're gonna get in reimbursement. Other questions?
Mr. Pink, or Mr. Ortiz, do we approve the one twenty for the two days, or is this what is given on the receipts? They already have the receipts for the one. And these two individuals.
Commissioner, I advised them just to say the receipt, whatever they spent, that's what they're gonna get paid.
That's what they're gonna get paid?
Yes, ma'am. That's why I have the receipt.
Since, uh, Commissioner's court has approved a per diem for more than a day, they would just get the sixty dollars.
Correct.
But, but if it was less than a day, then they would do the receipts, and that would be reimbursed to pay with.
Is there a motion?
Uh huh.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Du Lucavilla. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one non-voting vote, non-voting member, that is Commissioner Orenda. Three point four, discussion appropriate action approval for jailer Maggie Ortiz and Ralph Flores to attend the basic county corrections physical skill, July first and second, in Del Rio, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Du Lucavilla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Question?
Are all these were to your needs?
Yes, ma'am. Judge, also want to let you know that, uh, Thursday last week, we received eight more marshals, our count is at forty-eight right now.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Three point five, discussion and appropriate action sheriff's report, the sheriff submitted the report.
Yes, we, we had, um, executive.
So, uh, we did get the four Durangos, the only thing I'm waiting on is the radios, we're still backboard on the radios, I have not received them, but once I get the radio, I'll have these four Durangos up and running, to replace them with the older.
Sheriff, is there a particular reason why some deputies have way more citations than the others?
Some of them that were either running, uh, Stone Garden, they're running their Stone Garden or running traffic.
Chair, um, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, do you, do you handle the, the code, the code offenses for illegal tracks or ducking?
Uh, right now, we've been following the reports, correct, citations.
But you issued a citation, who issued the citations?
It's been to us, right now. We've been following citations. We've been following citations. I believe Mr. Gonzalez went to...
Mr. Gonzalez, I am proud to say that he attended the full course for code enforcement, so he is officially certified.
Actually, Your Honor, that was the beginning of the certification process, I'm not supposed to...
To be, to...
But it's the beginning of the process.
It's what I'm trying to buy you.
That's for almost...
He took the, I guess, the basic course.
Right.
Questions of the sheriff's report?
Sheriff, do you think your men or your deputies do any kind of training on how to handle the medical patients?
If we do have, if they do come down and give it, actually here, local, so we wanted to send them out, we've had, from MHR, they've been coming down, glasses on it, part of requirement for us, police officer requirement, training, crisis intervention.
I hate for somebody to have some like, this morning with a hard problem, they're pulling up, you know, running around, but just something, a certificate or something just so they happen to solve it. You all are aware of how to handle that.
I know there is a 40-hour course to actually be a certified, but I'm trying to get, let's say get squared with my deputies, want to send at least a couple of them to get certified for that.
Do you have somebody seeing them?
No, we have some that are certified, they, I mean, they take the basic course, the mandate, they're mandated by state for a license.
Did you handle the what, what was it?
Mental patients.
Also, that form I gave you from the Southern Software, the intervention won't take place until they get the sign.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the sheriff's report. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Oh, great. The report for the citations, it will not match the one from the JP's, right? Is that the difference?
I think the biggest thing, Commissioner, what I took away from the discussion earlier was that it's going to show that there's 117 citations, but if they're not input at the judge's level, it's not going to show, it's not going to match.
Yeah, what we have here is what we have put into the system, that's what we're going to bring out.
Because my main concern is that you and I both know Constable Badez has come here, and he has a lot of citations in Big Wels. But then when we get the numbers from the JP's, like you said, there's only 20. So it's a matter of not being input.
Yeah, well, that's kind of like, no, or make sure because we're under oath and agreed and approving these reports, and these reports aren't accurate.
See, in our reports, that's why I'm giving them one the second, instead of the first one, because the first one, we usually don't have them all entered at the time, these are all entered within our system.
Just looking at, I was reviewing them, just one of the deputies shows one high number, and I go back to the JP's, and it's totally different. So I'm just asking you, if I'm approving it, or what you guys are presenting to us, or what the JP's are presenting to us, and it's not making sense, either or, I'm making sense.
That's why I asked her, for here, they're not getting, they're not getting input into system. She said, well, no, because we're doing this.
And I know it's been an issue way before, because I always ask, why doesn't it make sense if they don't match, the numbers don't match? I just need to make sure because we're approving two different reports, but...
At mine, to print this out, they have to be mandated in and ready in our system, and it gives you for May 1st to 31st.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff. 4.1, Discussion on Appropriate Action Status Report from Rec. Utility and Regulatory Department.
I think we found the problem to that, so, at the time, one time, we run out of that line, got worked on, they put a boot, that boot collapsed, and when everything was getting flushed, everything was getting stuck. And we repaired it.
Thank you.
And I think they used a baseball field last week, and everything was on, was on good.
All right, motion by Commissioner Duwukawa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion?
Judge, I would like to thank Commissioner Uranda for installing the, the remitters, I guess, even though they're not able to, we just read about the price of things, so we know where the hobbies and all that, so...
It's angry.
They're real people, and that, he looks terrible.
We, we act pretty healthy, it's got three foot acres.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Hyman. No, Ms. Commissioner Duwukawa and Alonso already motioned, we're just voting. 5.1, Discussion on Appropriate Action Monthly Report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz, for the month of May 2024.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Really, the only thing I just wanted to make you all aware of, for the airport account, it does show negative, but that was just because a check was cut on the last day of the month. But we are good in the banking side.
Ms. Ortiz, I have a question in regards to, I've had several phone calls regarding to reimbursements of people that use the county arena for weddings and quinceañeras, and not reimbursing them in a timely manner. Do you know anything in regards to that?
I do know, well, I make the initial deposit whenever the events coordinator brings over the money, but the timing of the release of the deposits, I feel that's more of your question for you.
Is there a reason, Mr. Ferreira? I got three phone calls last week in regards to people used the arena for a wedding, and somebody else used it for a quinceañera, and they've waited over a month to get reimbursed. And I know for a fact, those two particular individuals that called me, we had approved them in last docket, the claim docket, so I was just wondering what the status was as to why we were having checks to those people.
Because they, they submitted to accounts payable, and then we bring it to the claim docket, and then we process it, so...
Well, it's already been approved in the claim docket as of June 3rd, so my question is, is why is your staff or whoever not expediting the process?
I would have to check into it, because I don't, usually, as soon as they get approved in the claim docket, it's usually out that week.
That's typically what I've seen, that's why I'm saying, and I know that these individuals called.
And they're mailed.
Yeah, that's what I've seen typically, but these individuals have, it's been, I think, over a month.
I will check into it and see, because we get it back from the arena, and that's the...
Yes, and I did talk to Ms. Ron Hill, and she did advise me, she submitted it about a month ago, so I don't know what the problem was.
I will check into it.
Thank you.
And then, also, I do know, I don't know if it applies to this situation, but we've had some instances where, for example, you know, the wife calls and initially makes the reservation, but then the husband or their brother or something, there's a different name than the actual person that actually pays versus who reserve, so I know that there's some discrepancy in that, or that your office has found, not knowing exactly who to make the deposit check back to. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
But I don't know if it's that, if that's the situation, but I know it has happened in the past, and there has been a delay for that reason.
I entertain a motion to approve Mr. Ortiz's report.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion?
Is this part of their report?
Yes, those are, it looks pretty light, but those are all the investment interests.
My question is, why, you got here nine grand overtime?
Uh, the, oh, for the month of May? With which month? I believe it's labeled with my months for the overtime.
This doesn't have any months on it.
May 1st to the 12th.
On, you're asking about the overtime, correct, in the bottom quarter? I just thought that...
This, uh, May overtime, uh, 4,734, 43.
Yes, I was just, I just wanted to make the Commissioners' Court aware of whenever we do pay out cash overtime, and that's due to, that's due to whenever an employee is after 40 hours of comp time.
Promotion approved?
Uh, well, with the policy of the comp.
No.
Yes.
We approve overtime cash if...
Over 40 hours.
No, if it was an emergency. It was not over 40 hours.
That's, when you all went to 40 hours, instead of doing the 240, you brought it down to 40 hours, that's all.
The agreement was that they should be under 40, and if they were not under 40, they were going to be placed in home, that was what we discussed.
That was.
Right, but I can't, if the supervisor chooses not to send them home, I can't just not pay them, if they already put it on their time sheet. So that's why I'm essentially forced to pay the overtime, because I can't just not pay an employee for the hours they worked.
Again, this is a formality, of course, it has to be approved by Commissioners' Court, if you can review the documents, our policy went up by $63.08. Mr. Ferreira and I sat down with Clarissa Martinez, the representative from TAC, who advised us that this is a reflection of the amount of, the amount of, the amount of individuals using our insurance, and it's on a pool to where they review and how much they see foreseeably in the future that it's going to cost us. I can't tell you, without going into any kind of detail, that there was two really, really big claims this past year for Dimon County, when I say really big claims, meaning there was an employee that used the insurance policy, and the insurance paid out over $500,000 on that individual. With that being said, that does increase the cost of the county, because they're having to, obviously, they look at, at the risk management ratio, and how much it's going to cost them to, in the pool, to pay for our employees, and it was a huge difference because of the fact that just this past year alone, two employees essentially charged or used the county insurance in amounts well over $700,000. So that's what this number reflects.
And, and what happened was, it would actually end up $600,000 more than what they actually collected from the county. And so, on the figures that you have in front of you, it is, this, if you look at the far right-hand, you're going to see the 151,000, that's taken into consideration on a monthly basis, per person, is $62. There's 203 claim, I mean, insurances that we pay per month, it totals to 151,908 additional costs to insurance for this year. And if you look at the differences per month, that's what the increase will be for all these different categories. You're going to have the employee at 62, the spouse, just the spouse is 68, just the child is 22, children in the family is 48, and the whole family would be $95. And on the right-hand side, that's what the yearly cost will be to all these different plans that they have. But overall, we're still doing good, because, like I said, we, they actually paid out over $600,000 more than what they collected from us.
What will see this year?
Yes, 2024, 2025.
The new, the new rates for the employees in the county will start October 1st. And then, I also wanted to ask, on behalf of my office, for the health insurance, there's an option on the agreement that's in front of you, where either the county handles the Cobra notifications, or Blue Cross Blue Shields will handle it for us, and I was asking if we could choose for Blue Cross Blue Shield to handle the Cobra notices. There's only a charge for it if a person elects for it. So if they don't elect for it, and normally, nobody does, we only have one person right now that's on Cobra, but there would only be about, I believe, Clarissa had told me about $200 if a person does want to do it. But if there's, if nobody wants to do it, there's no charge for the county.
I'll entertain a motion.
Judge, I have a question. On the...
Let me just finish that, and reopen it. Motion to renew the county Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance and keep it as it is. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, there's a request on the floor to open the monthly report from County Treasurer, Mr. Ortiz, for the month of May 2024. By Commissioner Duwukawa.
Mr. Ortiz, on the comp, all of the departments get a copy of it?
Every, yes, every department head, yes.
They get it?
Yes. And I believe...
We all know that our employees are at 40 hours.
Yes. Well, they don't get the, they shouldn't be getting the whole report, just their department, yes.
As long as they, they know that their employees are...
Yes.
It's like, there's more than 19 employees, and I'm one of them, one of my employees at 40 hours. So, if, for instance, if they're over three hours, that means they're getting paid those three hours?
Is their employees, for example, your employee, they're at the 40, or they're like at 43?
She's saying they're 40.
If they're at 40, and let's say one week, they happen to work 43 hours, those extra three hours would be overtime at time and a half. But if you want to be, you know, responsible, like physically responsible for your budget, you should be monitoring it, and be like, okay, I know this person, let's say, worked in, whatever reason, during the work week, they worked, they stayed longer, so therefore, maybe I should send that employee home the next day to make sure they don't go over...
So where does the comp time come into play? The comp time?
Like when, when they use it, or...
No, you understand what I'm saying, right? Because we have on their vacation, sick, and then comp. And so, if Commissioner Uranda has one of her employees at 40, and that week, they worked 43, because she had to keep them a little longer, because they had to do something, typically, normally, the way Commissioner Juan has seen it as, is that those three hours roll over into comp time, not paid as overtime.
And normally, they...
So then, when do you pay the overtime? That's my question.
When they reach the, at, once they reach 40 hours, everything is get paid. 40 hours of comp.
So then, so once they reach 40 hours of comp time?
Accrued comp.
Okay, so...
After that...
So to clear, to clarify then, is Commissioner Duwukawa says right now, she has an employee that's at 40 hours, they work 43.
In that work week, yes.
In that work week, but they only have 10 hours of comp time, those three hours are going to just get added to comp time?
Yes.
You're not going to pay them overtime?
No.
You only pay them overtime when she's looking at that column that says comp, and that column is over 40?
If that...
Then you start paying.
That's correct.
That's what the clarification is.
Yes, yes. So if they're not at 40, then it'll just get accrued. But if they're, once they're at the 40...
Of comp time.
Of comp time.
So I see around 19, they're like that.
But the time they worked over in that week, since it's not being paid at time and a half, it gets accrued at time and a half. So if you stayed two hours extra one week, you're going to get three hours of comp time in, you know, on your balance.
Judge, I think we're heading for a disaster here. There's some people here that got 56 hours, so that means that with the time comes, we got to pay them 16 hours at time and a half.
Yes, you're right. And that's why we need to, I, I'm going to sit down and discuss this with each department head to reiterate and remind them that they need to give those individuals time.
And the people...
Because when they're at 56, and they work five hours more, then you have to pay them overtime, but they still got 16 hours.
Yes, and the reason, for example, using your example, that reason, the person has 56, is because, I hate to say it, but before, before I got here, nobody really paid attention that the max was 40, so there was employees, I think you had mentioned it, people were getting 100, two hours of comp time. So when I came in, I put a cap, well, the max... So when I came in, I put a cap, well, if the max is forty, then your max is forty, and that's your cap. But if they're over, they essentially kind of got grandfathered in, and they can no longer go above that.
Here, let me ask you this. How do you pay when they're forty-three or forty-five, yet they miss a, a day? That the requirement is that you've got to physically work forty hours before they get overtime? So you just pay it regular time?
Yes. It, it's only overtime once the work week is over the forty. So let's say they stay, one of your employees stays, works the ten-hour days, let's say he works the ten-hour day, so-
To pick up the sheriff department, how are you paying them? Well, no, that's not my, that's your, um, that's your work.
The jail, the sheriff's office, uh, deputies are not on here, but this only applies to the, uh, jailers, not the deputies, because the deputies is a different overtime system. But there is, and I will sit down with the sheriff, and I'll sit down with Ms. Montes, because there is some individuals from the jail that have, that have, are past the forty, so they're going to have to give them the day off or give them hours. So I'll, I'll discuss that with the sheriff.
The jailers and the deputies, they have a grant, well, now the jailers do, but they have a grant that covers their overtime. But if they don't do the right paperwork to justify the grant overtime hours, then it gets put as comp time, or if they're at the max, then it has to get paid out.
And then we have to eat it up, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm going to say there's a lot of-
There is a lot of, yes, there is. I'll get with Ms. Montes, I don't know if she's still here, but I'll get with Ms. Montes and the sheriff to, to review that. Thank you, Ms. Montes. Anything else, Commissioner? Go away. Five point three, Discussion Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from our County Auditor, Mr. Pareda. Mr. Pareda, do we have a report?
Yes.
Maybe one's out, please, because I don't have it in here.
So during May, we actually did go over our current taxes by nineteen thousand nine hundred and twelve, so that means that June going forward, all that would be over our, what we projected to collect for the current, for the current year. And aside from that, everything else is going as it, as it should be. Uh, the sales taxes also pretty much in line by the end of the year. So currently, through the end of May, we're, we have total expense revenues of twenty million four hundred and seven, two hundred and ninety, which is in the fourth column at the bottom. And the next page, we have our expenditures, which through the end of May equal eleven million eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. So that means, that gives us nine million three hundred and twenty-four thousand revenues over expenditures. And so going forward to the end of the year, we should be, uh, having a hefty fund balance, additional fund balance.
Questions to Mr. Pareda? I'll entertain a motion.
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ogawa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number Fifty-seven for the jail. Ms. Montes, on the kitchen items, what in particular is a kitchen item?
Yes, uh, it was a vice, but it was the food. And the magnets is, we have finished painting up the windows. Sales side.
Questions? Motion by Commissioner Ogawa.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Aranda, Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Five point five, Discussion Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number Sixty-one for Road and Bridge Precinct Four.
General moving from vehicle repair to cover expenses for equipment repair and capital for the storage building for the wet center.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point six, Discussion Appropriate Action, Budget Number Sixty-two for sanitation.
General moving from uniforms to repair dumpsters to repair equipment for operating supplies to use base of the robot so we can get the water we got, the employees out there. Um, and then the containers should be the purchase of new containers, which we still have. And sanitation, we have most employee people deleting these containers. So with these containers, with these five thousand dollars, we can at least give fifty people on the, particularly, give people on the waiting list.
Any questions?
I'm going to, motion approved. Commissioner, do you think we can get a report on sanitation, like, the, kind of like what we do with the, everything else, the arena, like revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah, just so we can have a vision of, of all.
Do you want to begin or do we get them?
In a minute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point seven, Discussion Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number Sixty-three for the landfill.
Operating supplies to the windmill, we owe us two thousand, four hundred short.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point eight, Discussion Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number Sixty-four for the golf course.
Trying to transfer money to cover some, uh, operating supplies that we've been using out there, and, uh, and to cover the increase on the department, which, Mr., uh, if you can explain to the situation of, of your work.
So the, the, I believe it was the, well, President's Administration, uh, they had increased the salary threshold for exempt employees. So whoever's on a salary that they don't give the overtime, it went up from, uh, six eighty-four a week to eight eighty-four a week, with, which the, I had let Commissioner Uranda know that if, if legally he wants to keep his employee as exempt status, no overtime, he would have to, the salary has to be raised. So that, the amount I had advised him will cover until the end of this fiscal year.
Six eighty-four a week, you're right, sorry?
Uh, I believe it's eight eighty-four a week. So since there's about twelve weeks left in the year, two hundred bucks roughly, uh, every week, and that's how we arrived at that number.
You have a question, Commissioner Juan? Commissioner Juan, you have a question?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point nine, Discussion Appropriate Action, Budget Adjustment Number Sixty-five for the jail. I'm not sure that we can do a budget adjustment for overtime, Mr. Pareda. Would, to move it from janitorial supplies and all that stuff to overtime? That would be like a budget amendment? Right, Commissioner Juan? That's what you said, right? Commissioner, for, to do budget adjustment for, for salaries, that's like a budget amendment?
No.
For overtime?
I know, but it's just like the other, it's within her department. What the amendment would mean is you change, we actually change the budget. I'm not doing that this time.
You, did you notice that we couldn't move it?
Exactly.
No, if you want to do anything in payroll, just like you did right now, you have to bring it to Commissioners' Court. You can't just do it without coming to Commissioners' Court.
Uh, yeah, I understand that, but, um, what? You say one thing, and you do another.
No. Basically, overtime is treated like, or any personnel cost is treated like any item in your budget, so equipment-
No, because the other day, you wouldn't let Commissioner Uranda's office, uh, transfer money to pay somebody else a two-dollar raise for him having a CDL. So what's the difference here?
No, CDLs, it's already-
Well, they're, it's not, no, I don't know, as far as I've been advised by that employee, as per what Mr. Ortiz said, right? Because there's not enough money in there in Commissioner Uranda, so Commissioner Uranda was trying to transfer money, and your office told him that he couldn't.
No, to pay for CDL, that should be in a, you should come to Commissioners' Court, do the budget adjustment.
Can we try and do the budget adjustment?
For that only?
Or to, to, to allocate money to increase the CDL.
The CDL drivers?
The, the, to CDL.
But just to the amount that has been approved in Commissioners' Court?
I didn't mean to, what did you say?
The amount that's been approved in Commissioners' Court, because you already approved an amount.
No, not, not the three dollars, not the three extra dollars.
The three dollars have been, the three dollars are already approved there.
To increase their, or, there's, 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 not the CDL.
Right, so that would have to come to Commissioners' Court to get approved.
Yeah, we were going to put it to Commissioners' Court and said, no, you won't, you can't do it.
No, yes, you can. I don't know what, and I don't remember exactly the details on that, but for, to increase-
Comp loss, to increase their pay?
To increase their pay, you would have to come back to Commissioners' Court, because you already have-
Well, that's a budget amendment.
That's a budget amendment.
Correct. That's a budget amendment.
That's an adjust, it's just like anything, it's like any item.
That's what I'm talking about, nobody, you say one thing, he says one thing, Commissioner Uranda says another thing, Commissioner Juan. We did it to, we did it for Commissioner Juan the other day, that he wanted somebody at fifteen dollars, and we approved a budget adjustment for fifteen dollars. We did that.
I just-
We got it approved.
On his, it wasn't approved?
Yes, it was.
No, we take it.
He had to.
Oh, we take a look, yes.
You all take a look.
We take a look, because that's a budget adjustment, I mean, to me-
No, y'all didn't approve it because y'all didn't want to do it at the time, but-
Because it was in general fund.
Correct.
It was put on the wrong place.
Well, right, but you do it in the public facility, it's the same thing. I mean, within the fund. If you're, the only way to do it, if you do, come into Commissioners' Court. That's a policy that you all have said.
To me, that's something, I don't know, Judge, or maybe I'm misunderstanding, because this is overtime. She's just trying to make a budget adjustment to pay the overtime that's already been approved, or it already has it.
Or going forward.
Or going forward, yes. And I thought for that, we could do the budget adjustment for overtime. That means, that's my thing, that's what I'm saying, do all the elected officials get paid? Because there's a lot of employees in here that are at the forty, so that's causing the overtime.
Correct.
Right, but you all said, but you all have the policy that they're not supposed to be going over the forty.
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's for all, for everybody else. In the jail and the sheriff, that's a different situation. So they have to do, if he's short on, uh, if he's short on personnel, and somebody else has to work, the overtime or the, whatever amount it is, it has to be done. So that's why it is just, you're not going to increase anybody's salary, you're just moving it to overtime.
Pareda, that's why it looked like a bad guy all the time, because if you can make a budget adjustment, it's a budget adjustment, right, within the department. But when you're going to give it like a memo, that's totally different. Like, like the judges, she agreed to let me see, and I have some more money, okay? But the first time, we put it, you put it as an adjustment, it's an adjustment, it's a memo, because she didn't have it on, right?
Like, the whole purpose of a budget is that we allocate funds where we project, or where we're going to pay these individuals. And whether you do overtime, or whether you do a salary increase, or you do whatever to increase somebody's pay, that defeats the purpose of a budget. Because you can just go and move monies around down the road halfway through to pay somebody what you really wanted to pay at the inception of a budget. And that defeats the purpose of a budget. It's like, I'll use Commissioner Carmona, for example, if he, the agreement was he's going to pay his secretary at the beginning of the budget, uh, they're ten dollars an hour, and just halfway through, he feels like paying her more, you're going to use overtime to pay her more, move money, you're being sneaky about it and moving it around. And that, it defeats the purpose of why there's a budget.
Well, that would be something that you would take up with the sheriff as far as him having the overtime. But that's what this adjustment is.
We're not talking about the sheriff.
Well, no, no, but that's his scheduling. That's his scheduling, I'm not saying-
We're talking about the regular employees.
The regular employees.
Keep talking about the sheriff for the jail, for the jail employees.
That's what it is. So he does it because he's short on staff, and so he's going to have people do overtime. Now, if you all want to discuss that with him, then you all need to bring it up with him.
The main problem with IC, IC, at the county insurance court, my, my opinion is, we're starting to pay overtime, but we had a really long time ago not to pay overtime.
Okay, the sheriff-
For nobody, if, if they were over the forty, their, their limit, they were supposed to get sent home. We've been trying this for the last fifteen years, since I, uh, twelve years since I've been here, and we never have done it. Now we're trying to pay overtime. It's not fair for the rest of the other elected officials, that they work their men, we work their men.
Okay.
And then we send them home. What's, what's the use of us trying to follow the rules, and nobody owes us?
But that's why Mr. Ortiz was saying that back in the previous administrations, no one ever said anything, just either turned the blind eye, or didn't-
No, the officers have said it.
Well, that's not what Mr. Ortiz is saying, because now Mr.-
You're wrong, because we can go back to minutes wherever.
Okay.
As you're, I've been here for a long time, you have always said, you see them home when they get to forty hours. I want, I want to see what we've been over time in the old administration.
But overtime in the old administration was only you-
You tell me, it's a full requirement.
Exactly, exactly.
And nobody else.
Let me just clarify-
Exactly, and that's, that's what I'm saying, but Mr. Ortiz is saying that now, he's paid attention to it, and this is the way you were supposed to do it, so that's why he's paying now.
Well, we never turned a blind eye, I can guarantee that, because I was the one that always took that on, and that we're not supposed to overtime.
Let me, let me clarify, let me clarify. Commissioners' Court may have said it, but payroll never applied what you said. And also, payroll can't apply what you say if the other department head doesn't send them overtime to do it. Because, for example, I, I know that you have an employee that's at forty hours of comp. And if I get that timesheet and they worked overtime, I can't just be like, okay, I'm not going to pay him because Commissioners' Court said, like, that, that supervisor's supposed to-
I understand your point, but my point is being that we never had allowed overtime for other people.
We would send them, I have sent them prior to any time, yeah.
And, and I cannot call, Mr. Garcia, I'm using exactly. I can call Mr. Garcia and say, hey, I'm checking on your people's sign, you need to send your person's home, because that's an autonomy of office, and that's up to the elected official. I can only pay what's provided on the timesheet, using the, uh, policies that have been set by Commissioners' Court. And since y'all have a policy of forty hours of comp, they accrue comp until they get to forty. Once they're at forty, anything over that has to get paid out. Once they're at 40, anything over that has to get paid out until they use, until they bring it down.
Even with judgment, those of us here, we always told them, cut down your hours, you have a lot of people that say, we don't have enough people, we don't have. Well, sit on home, I mean, get, get people, they had, they got a big budget, they could, they could always hire somebody else.
Sir, right now I have five transports right now, right now going out of camp, five.
Also, overtime is.
And we can take going back.
I understand that, ma'am.
So it's hard for us to do, you know, overtime because it is just two right now officers right now in our jail. So it's a safety of the jail that I, you have to give some kind of, I do look at the, on the comp time, well, we have enough people, I do send them home. Say, you have to go ahead and take the two days off or whatever, I do, but right now.
I understand all of that, but we, we talked to the sheriff, when we lived there, we told him, if there's some other way that you can get somebody for transportation, a constable, a deputy, even, even a whole bunch of reserve officers, sit, sit on 12, that's before you.
I do have my deputies going on this also.
They're all going to Florida.
Right. And we, I mean, that's the thing, we're going to Florida, Gainesville, they come back.
Deputy's are going to Florida for a bench work. Deputy's are helping us out.
Well, maybe we should just get a, a department judge, you can create a department judge for transport. And, and, and that's it, that's the only job they have. They can work 40 hours and that's the only job they're going to have.
All right, no, I have five going on transport.
Well, you can get 10 employees. Get 10 employees to transfer people to wherever they need to go.
But I think the thing is that, you know, since you have reserves, I know they have a schedule, but if they're on those days, as, as the sheriff has reserves, then no, I can, they have a reserve too.
And they have to, like, right now, I have five right now going on transport, I have two.
Or the constables, I mean.
To, to Anabana right now.
I don't think I, I wonder if I have a lot of transports.
So you're short staffed.
Well, when there's, not short staffed, where there's.
They, they, they can wait for the transport, because we got. Like the marshal, if we send somebody, you have to have two. And when we go out of state, we're going to have to have two. It's not probable enough.
We have a B number. Put it on your budget, sure. And figure something out. Because, you know, all our rules, you sit on home, okay, you're saying you're short staffed, fine, I understand that. But on the budget request, five or 10 transport operators, they used, they used to have before and that's all they're going to do is just take them to wherever they need to go. They won't go over 40, because you don't see everybody at, I mean, every day you take somebody out there. And now it's minimal that way we've been transporting. But if you have five people, it won't be overtime, that's what I'm trying to get at. You all look good and there's no overtime.
Essentially, we have, in the real court, we have at 1:00, so we'll leave at 10:00. So we'll.
If they're from the state, you want to get reverse from Zelina, because he's, he's got L O S.
The marshal, the marshal.
Huh?
The marshal. The one we have is in the real court.
One of the things is also that previously, we didn't keep track, closed track of the 40 hours and 240. So that's, now that we're doing it, that's where we're seeing the.
I understand it, and I know if we don't pay him, we break the law and we can go to jail, and I understand all of it, but my.
Which we didn't before.
That there's, if there's a way to remedy this, it's very simple. I don't want to go to jail and try and pay somebody, but at the same time, we're trying to remedy a problem that has existed here since day one that I came in. But we still haven't solved it.
Usually in the sheriff, the jail and the sheriff's department, those are different situations.
So only the deputies, judge, can, can we? Only the deputies can be paid out of there?
We have funds for, or less for.
Jailers.
Jailer, so why can't we use the money from there?
Pay from there, why you have to make an adjustment?
This, correct me if I'm wrong, this budget adjust, adjustment is to cover what's already been paid, not for the rest of the year, right?
No, it's on for the rest.
Because I remember that they brought this up to my attention a few months ago.
She knows you, what kind of, and, and get them to remind?
But we didn't have, but I don't know if we can use, since we, the timing of the grant. No, no, right. But I don't know if we can use the grant to go back and pay overtime we paid before we got the grant. Does that make sense?
No, but this is not for retro, this is for going forward, right, Ms. Montes?
I think we can.
She's saying this is.
If it is available then.
Yes, because. Yeah, because we got like $80,000 in.
When we started the grant, we were doing good, and then after that, I was advised, or if you have the, not, right now, huh? I was advised that if you get your 40 hours, you work your 40 hours and then you do your overtime with a, with a grant, if you miss one day, they won't pay you the grant, with the money grant, will come up to that.
Who said that?
We, we have to take the difference from the grant, so let's say, because normally you work 40 hours and then everything after that is, is overtime, right? But overtime isn't earned daily, it's earned by the end of the week. So if an employee missed a shift, they're only at 32 hours, you know, regular time. And you think, you think you have eight hours of overtime, but really those eight hours aren't overtime yet because you didn't even meet your first week. So those eight hours get paid to you regularly. But let's say you work 10 extra hours in four days. You only have to use eight hours to cover your 40 and then you'll have two hours left at overtime. But the, but the key is getting 40 hours by the end of the week and then anything after that is overtime. But it's a little kind of difficult with the jail or with the sheriff's department because they have to do the guards and different, they have to document different things in order to get credit for that.
I'll give Selena to make sure that if we can't do it, we'll do it.
So I'm under request for this item to be tabled so that Mr. Pereira can follow up with the grant coordinator to see if we can pay the overtime from the grant. Motion by Commissioner Lotso Kavon, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, we didn't look at that, I'm not yelling, I'm just, I just, I always speak up so loud.
5.10 discussion appropriate action budget adjustment for the fire department.
Judge, I submitted the backup, but the brush drop is in need of a transmission. And I can table it, I guess, to this time, also to be submitted on the next one.
Yes.
But the, the only question was, since we're out of funds for repair, and we can move money around that much, where can we?
We'll get, we'll get with Mr. Pereira and myself and you will figure it out. I have a motion by Commissioner Lotso Kavon, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Motion carries. I'm going to recall item 2.14, discussion appropriate action approval interlocal agreement with Texas Park and Wildlife, Dimmitt County. Mr. Pereira has submitted an item regarding the amount owed by Texas Park and Wildlife for a tower, radio tower that is utilized by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. As of May 2024, the Parks and Wildlife owes Dimmitt County the amount of $1,008.
And this is also going forward for the next two years.
That they would pay a sum of $112, $112 monthly for rental fee, if you will, for that radio tower.
They have a fee?
Well, they have a fee since May of, look.
It's, it's February 24th, May 24th. The year.
That's what they, that's what they owe right now, but the new contract will go from June, the next two years. And so this contract will pay, they'll pay us the $1,000 plus going forward for the use of the, of the radio tower.
Sir, I think, I believe that the farm market road, it's supposed to be 2367, not 2387?
Again?
The farm market road where the, where the tower is located, it says FM 2387 and it's supposed to be FM 2367?
67, okay. We'll tell them to work that.
It should reflect 2367?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have access to correct any issues with the contract, Mr. Pereira? Do we have access to correct this?
We can call them and tell them to change it.
They would have to probably just prove 387.
Are there any other issues or concerns with this lease agreement? Mr. Pereira, we can get the correction made there to reflect 2367 and I entertain a motion that we approve that contract contingent that Mr. Pereira gets a revised version of that contract. Motion by Commissioner Lotso Kavon, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Have a clam docket for 5.11, general fund $3,366,784. Dimmitt County Airport $3,847.40. Dimmitt County Golf Course $20,164.52. Courthouse Security $2,263.15. Records Management County Clerk $1,338.88. Utilities $52,738.12. Rodeo Arena $100. Stone Garden $51,331.36. Operation Lone Star 2022 $23,403.63. Dimmitt County Payroll $602,577.28. Tax Note Series 2023 $258,500, $500. Grant total $4,052,864.18. I have a question too, but go ahead.
Oh.
Go ahead.
On the tax office, Mr. Pereira, there's a $2 million. What, what do I need?
Those were, there was a wire that came in.
Is it going to act?
It, it was actually a wire that came in several months ago and we thought that it was royalty for the escrow accounts that the district clerk had, so we're trying to follow up on that. So in the meantime, we had it there at the general, in the treasury. And so recently, the tax office was contacted by an oil company that said they already had to pay their taxes and that's when they found out that it was actually wired to us and it wasn't the district clerk's money. And so that's what we're doing, transferring it over to the tax office so they can distribute the money to different entities.
Did you ever verify where it belonged to?
Yeah, well, we did, we tried to contact the attorneys and they said they didn't know and that they would come back and let us know. We never recorded it as revenue. We knew it belonged to, like I said, we thought it would belong to the district clerk's office because they receive checks for royalty all the time. And so I had a contact on her, she said she didn't know.
And have you ever seen royalties for 10 million dollars?
I don't know, I don't deal with it, it just, it had royalties in the, of course, in whatever wire we had, whatever we did. That's why we thought it was disservice.
But it didn't stay royalty. But it didn't stay royalty.
It was from an oil company, which is what we thought.
I'll, I'll take the heat on this one. No, no, it was, it was my mistake, I had saw we had gotten paid a missing deposit from one oil company and I assumed like it was every other one, so I deposited it within the general. So it's how, Mr. Pereira, it's on me.
But when he did bring it out to me, we did, actually he did do the positive review, but we took it out and put it in as a liability. And like I said, I did go talk to, to the district clerk and she told me that she, she would need more information to find out who it belonged to. And so that's why I contacted the attorneys. They took a long time to get in contact with me, when they did, they said, well, we need to do more research on it and so they never got it, they, at this point, they have never come back with it. But we did set it aside, we did put it as our revenues. And so that's, so now, when they called the tax office, when they got their late notice, is when they started looking for it and that's when they notified us because they sent it to the wrong place, they wired it to.
The general.
The general.
They wired it to the general.
Yes, I was contacted by the company on June 3rd by email because they got a delay with notice on their taxes. So then they sent me their information where it had her even paid. We searched all our AC through Forte, we couldn't find anything. We searched all our emails through Forte, couldn't find anything. So I sent a help ticket to Forte and asked them to search because I couldn't find it. So within a couple of days, we asked for bank statements from the company and they sent it to us and it just said Dimmitt County, but it did have their address, 301 North Fifth Street. So when finally, Thursday, I got the information that it was a wire transferred and that's when I sent the email to Mr. Pereira, the shorties, and the judge to make them aware that this money was in the county somewhere and it belonged to my owners. So I needed it transferred to my account so that I could pay out these taxes.
And we have been researching, trying to research as to who it belonged to before you sent it back, right?
Well, payments were made in October and December, so it's been eight months.
It was only $2 million?
$2.2 million.
It's only $2.2.
Which reflects the big $3 million amount.
Right, correct.
I have another question, Mr. Pereira, thank you, Ms. Saldo. On doctor, I say, I suppose it's a doctor because it's M.D. Maureen Burrows. There was a payment made to her for $11,400, what does that reflect?
What did you do that?
That's on page number one. Do you know what that's for?
It would have to be something. I have to, if I can look at it.
I have to go back and look at it.
And then also on page three, there was a amount for associated supply for ten thousand, eight hundred, eighty-five dollars.
That would be for the.
Well, it's the tax office. The, the tax office, the, uh, associated supply.
For ten thousand, Ms. Maureen, ten thousand, eight hundred, eighty-five dollars?
No, aren't you four four three?
No, that, that's an equipment company. Because four four three, that's road bridge, right? Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, because I look into tax details, sorry.
You had a purchase, Commissioner?
What?
He said precinct three, ten thousand, eight hundred, eighty-five dollars.
Associated supply.
What?
Associated supply. Associated supply.
I think it's ASCO, I think it's a company, A S C O.
That's a, what, an association? The ASCO, ASCO.
Oh, yes, that's a repair for that, uh, they call it that now?
Or they keep calling it that, I don't know.
That's not repair for the maintainer.
It's associated supply.
Huh?
Associated supply.
That's how you all allocated it on that, but it's.
For ASCO, uh, we had, uh, to repair that, uh, maintainer. It's a big word for me, uh, I'm not that educated.
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the claim docket. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular meeting. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The time is one forty-eight, Mr. Garcia, and I'm calling the public facilities meeting to order. Roll call, let the record reflect that all individuals are present, all four commissioners and county judges in this meeting. One point three, approval of minutes of regular meeting, June the third, twenty twenty-four. I have a motion by Commissioner Nukawa, subject to any corrections, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion appropriate action, new business?
Judge, there's still requesting a lot of lights out there, so I wanted to ask you, we have to comply with that for, there were no lights before, now they're asking for, for, uh, bright lights.
Where are you from?
At the port position. There, there were no lights at the, at the horses stable, now they want lights. They come at night, they say they can't see the horses. So I was just wondering if we need to comply or, or come hold off on that?
At the.
Which is light, it, it, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars, it's one, and then it, it adds up when, when you put ten or fifteen, and it really add up. So I was just wondering if, if we have to comply with whatever they request. And I know they're paying a lot of money, but still.
Any other business? I say we need to wait to get the contract from Donato, we need to get, wait to get the contract from Donato to see what our obligation is.
Aye.
Any other new business? I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Com- Commissioner Carmona's report.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Nukawa, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one, financial monthly report for the public facilities.
So in the report, if you look at the top, it's revenue earned this year, and it's nine hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars that have come in. And if you look at the expenditures through the end of May, we have two hundred and four, one hundred and ninety-five thousand. So we're close to seven hundred thousand revenues or expenditures for this year. So basically, that's been the general outcome every year for the last two or three years.
Two or three.
Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nukawa, discussion?
Judge, uh, we have a vehicle there at, at the public facilities. It's starting to be a little trouble also. So next year, I'll just put it in the agenda, and whoever comes in, they wanna buy it, buy a vehicle for them, that's fine. My, my question to you, sir, I mean, is that to individuals to charge whatever they want for the inspection? For the vehicles? Because when we, when we used to take them to zero time, you would pay forty there and forty at, at, at here at Mary's, at, uh, beside the lines. And now we start at sixty-five dollars, we went from the forty to sixty-five.
What's current sixty-five? Who is?
Uh, maybe where you take your vehicles for, uh.
The, the laws changing, uh, September one, if I'm not mistaken. There no longer, you never need, need vehicles inspected.
Commercial vehicles, these are D O T. The law's changing for, for.
Domestic.
Domestic vehicles. All right. Because people pay forty. Yeah. And then forty for beside the line, but now it's sixty-five, and whatever beside the line charges is. So I was just wondering if, if, if they're allowed to charge. I, I would assume is what the state started, unless they, unless they replace something on their truck, or something they added to their vehicle. Because he's the only one that does it wrong here, well, they have to go to where you land, and then you come out, you don't come out, pero. I mean, Jesus, I'm probably, I use, uh, Hoya, in Cristo City.
Where?
Hoya, uh, in Cristo City, past, uh, Hoya, well, in Cristo City.
In San Jo?
But I go to Hoya, uh, after.
In San Jo, right.
What is this, I throw forty?
Forty?
Yeah, I was wondering why you would not. Like I say, I just didn't know why, why you would not. No, I don't think, appreciate that, sixty-five on this truck, and then sixty-five on the trailer. Thank you, sir. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries three point two, discussion appropriate action budget adjustment, number thirty-five, public facilities.
Judge, if everyone, uh, I don't know, we're having so many discussions on how to go there, I'll just wait some people. I wanna do something that's gonna come and bite me later on.
Motion to table by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point three, discussion appropriate action budget adjustment, number forty-eight, public facilities.
That's for the.
Middle Rio.
Yes, sir. It's totally.
This is from Middle Rio, right?
Yes, ma'am. And also, like I told you the last time, I have a report at Middle Rio, that way, companies, where, so we're up, we're doing over there.
Motion by commi- motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Claim docket three point four, public safety, twenty thousand, six dollars and twelve cents. Are there any questions? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, discussion?
Mr. Pereira, did, did you put down on the budget on, uh, the public facility by itself? I mean, with the public, uh, public facilities for, uh, Middle Rio, I'm sorry, for Middle Rio, did you make that, uh, line item for that?
Yes. New budget, it will be, Middle Rio will be included, or repairs.
If this, uh, we're using funds at night, we're gonna, we're using another, like, capital.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure, just what you want. Capital, make it run.
I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you.